Web Board Meeting of August 3, 2021. Welcome to in-person. This is a little bit exciting to have everybody back in person. So, thank you for everybody's time. And thank you for everybody for following the mask mandate as well. I'm going to do my best to speak up. I have a very quiet voice and wearing a mask doesn't help. So please let me know if you can't hear me. I'm just going to start off really briefly with a facility awareness and safety briefing. So if you're here for public testimony, please make sure that you've signed up outside in the lobby. We are only able to access the first floor of this building. There are restrooms that are located out these doors and down the right hallway. And there are some emergency exits in case of an emergency. There's these exits back here and there's exits in the back of the room there. And if for some reason there is an emergency, the assembly point is at the flagpoles near the parking lot if evacuation is wanted. So with that, we will go on to item number one, which is an agenda chat. Anybody have anything about the agenda for tonight? Nope? Okay. And moving right along to item number two, items from board members and general managers. So I think that I'm just going to go down the line this way and enter the general manager.
I'm good. Thank you. Lovely.
I just have one really small thing and I don't even know if it warrants coming to the board level, but one of the school board members reached out to me because they are interested in figuring out what it would mean to electrify their buildings, what the feasibility of all that is. And they don't really have the capacity to figure that out themselves. So she reached out to me saying, is this something Eweb could help us even understand what the issue is? So I told her that I'd just bring it up with the rest of the engineers and if it's okay, we can direct staff to reach out to the school board and help them figure out the answers to some of their questions. So just head nods if that sounds okay to you.
Yeah, I'll just kind of clarify that. I'm really bored, but also in facilities. Ryan Spain kind of talked about, I think, the two people who do that, they're in charge of building, well, medicine and gas bridge right now. So those are the ones that will do the analysis. But yes, I have.
Great. So.
Let it be said. Yeah, certainly.
Why, nobody can hear what you're saying. Nobody can hear you. Can't hear you at all.
I'm sorry. I said that the school board has reached out to us.
Just kind of close to the mic.
Yeah. Anyway, somebody from the school board reached out to us and asked for information to help them figure out what it means to electrify their buildings and to answer some of their questions. So we're just got some head nods from the board that we're going to direct the staff to reach out to the school board and help them figure that out.
You'll do that.
Great. Thank you. That's all that I have.
Nothing for me at this point.
I just want to say thanks to the staff team who continues to adjust to different locations, different types of persons, protecting, making it all work. Much appreciated. No sense.
Yes, President, I only have one thing this evening. It's really not a general manager's item. I did want to point out that Commissioner Carlson is absent tonight. This is an excuse absence since he had planned for quite a while. Her first absence in four and a half years. So just wanted to point that out for people.
Great. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to public inputs. So again, if you're here for public input and you haven't signed up in the lobby, please do so because we're collecting all the little clips. We've got one more coming up. All right. Thank you. All right. For public input, please state your name and optionally your address and speak firmly towards the microphone. Each speaker will be offered three minutes to present their testimony. Our board secretary and Paul will keep time. Please see the timer at the board table, which will indicate your time remaining. A series of beeps will sound when your time has elapsed. After all testimony is heard, each commissioner will have an opportunity to speak if they choose, although by policy, we do not engage in a back and forth dialogue. Please note that failure of a commissioner to speak shall not be construed as support of or opposition to any speaker's testimony. If a question is presented by a speaker and the board does not provide an answer, an Eweb staff member will contact the speaker so that the question can be addressed at a later time. The public testimony for this meeting is now open. All right. So I'm going to call what's first person and who is going to be followed by. And I apologize if I mispronounced anybody's name. So first up, we have Richard Thorne, followed by Ralph McDonald.
What do I do?
Yes, come right up there.
Do I have my mask on? Sound work?
Yep.
I'm Richard Thorne. I live at 87413 Green Hill in West Eugene. I have a bunch of apartment houses spread all over Eugene and some front bill. The word, if you can look up the word ludicrous on your phone, it is exactly the words that matches keeping the lobby over here closed to pay my bill. But it's anyway, I just looked it up ludicrous and it just fits perfect. It's just foolishly hilarious, you know, to keep that lobby closed. You have the best, I've been doing business over in that lobby for like 35 years. And you have wonderful customer service representatives over there and they're still even on the phone, they're trying to be after you spend 45 minutes or an hour waiting for them to get to the phone. And then trying to do the number one option to pay a bill, which doesn't even work, and then go to some kind of a portal business. Everybody's doing portals. Portals do not work and they're not, anyway, I'm not a public speaker, but really, you know, Mr. Lawson, please keep that lobby open for people. There is no other public place for me to go and see any Eweb people. I have no idea where to close them. There's just, it's really inconsiderate to your clients. I think it's inconsiderate to me. I feel really put back because of that deal. Anyway, that's, you get the picture of what I'm talking about. I do a lot of business with a lot of money every month in that place. I'd really like to go in, see people, talk to them, pay my bill, give my credit card and then give me back my stuff. It's wonderful. Works. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Why wait here for input or do I just leave?
No, you can go back and sit down and then at the end, if each commissioners are given an opportunity to speak if they want to.
At the end, after all the public input?
Yes. Yeah.
Well, it'll go on the record somewhere.
Yeah, it will.
I lived here my whole life, but I'm not going to be involved in salvaging tree issues.
Thank you for coming today. Okay, so next up, we have Ralph McDonald, followed by Mark Rabinowitz.
Ditto. I agree with previous gentleman, having spent over three hours in the last two or three weeks on the phone trying to get through to Eweb, which I've never successfully done, especially in the last four. Basic tricks tried, but not successfully. My name is Ralph McDonald and I'm the co-chair of the Southwest Hills Neighborhood Association. I'm speaking on behalf of the Southwest Hills Neighborhood Association. I live at Matt Keating's Ward Two. I had the pleasure of meeting some of you on previous occasions at previous forums, but tonight I'm talking about what I believe is a travesty of the booting of the site at 40th and Patterson. Board of the Southwest Hill neighborhood association voted on July 6, seven to zero to oppose Eweb's proposed project there until and only if Eweb can better demonstrate the need, need to build two massive reservoirs rather than one, need to cut more than two acres of mature Eugene fir trees. The growth of large conifer trees equated in the center of the site is about 60% water by weight. It sequesters carbon and counters climate change. Climate change is on the agenda in our city here. The growth helps cool off all of Eugene apertes, helps clean the air of pollutants coming from the Whittaker neighborhood, helps retard the spread of fast-spreading wild power and contributes other civic values, including aesthetic value and wildlife habitat, monarch butterflies, affiliated woodpeckers. I think the, Eweb is trying to play hardball with the neighbors and the concerned population of Eugene. I've been told that it's private property and signs are up saying private property or they're applying it. Or I've been told by staff that Eweb doesn't need a city permit, where you need four city permits. To the city, the city says you need seven permits. You haven't replied for because you did a midnight massacre between Friday, getting your permit in late afternoon and cutting down 250 trees between 7:45 and mid-morning on Monday yesterday. Can't repair or can't retrofit College Hill. Heck, I've been told that you can retrofit it or repair it to replace your 15 million gallon tank there. Neighbors are reasonable. We're talking about one tank that you promised up until April 6. Until April 6, you get some outreach, but afterwards you doubled the project and doubled the cost without doing outreach. Last minute midnight thing, no outreach. Oak Savannah versus fir trees. What a red herring that is. The fir trees are largely 60 to 75% 60 to 65% water. Anyway, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Mark Rabinowitz, followed by Susan Barnhart.
The distance from 40th and Patterson to your new compound in the west Eugene wetlands is roughly the breathable thickness of the atmosphere. We all do and that thin film affects everybody. I brought here a donation through the utility of Oregon ash and a black oak to help with your reforestation. Friends of trees planted a dozen oaks on the south side and maybe in the 22nd century, they will provide shade and habitat. You had big pines cut. You had oaks that are probably a hundred years old cut. There's a small wetland on the site that has been trampled to death. Yesterday after the logging, I didn't see any monarch butterflies. There's a lot of them there. But I hope all of you have had the opportunity to see it and smell it for yourselves. I hope the children's lawsuit plaintiffs have been up there to see it before and after. Senator John Kennedy, before he became president, wrote a book called Profiles in Courage. And he joked that this small book has been applied many examples of courage in politics. We know for thousands of years that clear cuts create deserts. And that going on here in the northwest, it's not only fossil fuels, that's part of the problem. And you will know it was sneaky to randomly approval through and people were distracted, traumatized and shut out of buildings from view. Your clear cuts narrow crime scene. Leave the security guard on site with the water truck for now. And of course, the real purpose of this project is not just because you elected seismic concerns for the last couple decades, it's also to facilitate the expansion of Eugene to Benita and Junction City euphemistically called urban reserves. One last thing totally different, electrification. Most of the increase in electricity generation in state Oregon in the last decade has been from natural gas, bracked natural gas. We have three gigawatts of wind and of natural gas installed in Oregon, but the wind makes a third of the power because it's variable and gases on mobile time. So electrification is a euphemism for burning more gas, ordnance and climate falls and sending the electrons over the cascades. I've used solar since 1990. First thing I learned, use less, not more. I realize utilities want to sell more electricity, but we're at the limits to grow. You know this extremely well, more than you're ever going to say in public. The limits to growth are here, but climate collapse is here. It'd be nice if you start behaving well.
Next, we have Susan Barnhart, followed by David Fossum.
Hi, Susan Barnhart. I live at 1439 West Fort Avenue. I live down the Whittaker, so I'm not envy, but I love trees. I think we all love trees. I saw that destruction, the execution of all those trees, and I hope that all of you went up there to see that. I've been in this building so many times. I appreciate that Eweb has always offered this building for community events. To be here again and to see how you, you all weren't following your mission statement. It's really incredible. So sad to see the destruction of all those trees, 200-year-old trees. Maybe in the 1950s, that was a good plan, but it's not a good plan during this catastrophe going on now with the climate, to lash bedrock, to destroy trees. A few trees are still up there, so please don't take any more of them down. It's just heartbreaking and to have no public hearings about it and to not explore other things. It's a time where we should be all concerning water. Water is very important. It is not a time to destroy an urban forest. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is David Fossum, followed by Bill O'Brien.
Hello, my name is David Housen. I live on Glen Other Drive between Donald Millan and 35th and 37th. Been there since 1996 and prior to that, further up the land closer to the site of the question since 1989. I'm a member of the Glen Oak Park Association, but I want to emphasize I'm not here to speak in there yet. But the Glen Oak Park is a small park that our backyard and several backyards join on to. We formed an association back in 1996 to interact with the city who owns that park and just to have communication with them over the years. My kids grew up, went to Springfield View and Edgewood elementaries and so, and they had friends that lived at the end of the hilliard, you know, in the houses that back on to the property where these tanks will go. And what I'd like to say is, sometimes I've been up there with my kids, you know, back in the 90s when they were growing up and, you know, riding bikes and making ramps in that woods under those Doug firs. And so I'm familiar with the site. My wife's an ecologist and she's highly knowledgeable about oak savanna. And we can comment that that hilltop was a remnant oak savanna for decades. And it's been overtopped by Doug firs in the last 150 years or so. So I'm here to talk about scale. Several people have brought up, you know, carbon sequestration, global warming, habitat for affiliated woodpeckers and monarch butterflies. I'm here to say, I don't believe this is a scale for us to solve those issues. This is a municipal water supply. You guys have been planning based on that elevation, there's only so many sites in our city that have that elevation that are suitable for putting water storage into. But it is at a scale that served that water supply for the entire city and restored a small patch of remnant oak savanna. So it's a perfect scale for achieving those two things. And that's how I first got involved in this project, was to advocate for taking an extra step in dealing with some oak savanna while you put the tanks in. My recommendation from what I understand about that is that the Doug fir trees that have overtopped those should be cut down or turned into snags to allow that oak savanna to release and restore a greatly diminished habitat that will serve many kinds of wildlife. And this is a perfect site to make a small addition to that. I don't see it as a site to deal with these larger issues that we're all worried about in our world today that we can't solve on our own for our city to work.
Thank you. I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name. Next, we have Bill O'Brien, followed by Joyce Gallagher.
Good evening, everybody. I hope you all have a wonderful day for the rest of your lives. And a lot of times I sometimes actually don't wish you that, but I should wish you that. So I was extremely disappointed yesterday on the second. You started cutting trees at 7:45. It was reported at 7:45. As far as I understand, we filed some work permit to be have. These other people said, you don't have a work permit. Eugene has to give you a work permit. You do whatever you want to because you're the utility company. And I tried to reach for straws, hoping that's a round person. I spoke to the mayor. Conversation with the mayor was, he's going to do whatever you want to do. Not going to listen to any of these people. Save Eweb Forest God work. These are highly intelligent people and we've had interaction with them. As I said before, you don't have a public process. Do whatever you want to do. COVID, a lot of us don't use spices in clothes, which they public. So, and once it do go to public forums, state council, they all need discipline. I'm going to probably be very disappointed tonight. I don't know. Fires easy, lots of fires. It was 25 and a half days without rain. I thought it was 45 days. If it's 45 days, maybe microscopic drought. Still getting dry, more fires every day and water is short. Very disappointed that you knew these people that said, go ahead, drill on site two, you love it. You know, welcome with open arms. Well, God, we're praised to be here for all time. I saw one of your white hats last night, yesterday, around 9:00, 10:00 o'clock in the morning. He came up, started to talk to us, people who were watching you destroy this parcel of mine. And he had tears in his eyes. And I got very angry with him, you know, said, you don't know about what they're doing. They're not accountable to anyone. I don't know anything about your stocks, your dividends. It's all unknown. Look at it. I can't find anything on it. I know you've got friends in high places. If they can call you, you're going to do what they essentially say. And that's it.
Thank you. Next up, we have Joyce Gallagher, followed by Krista Roha.
Hi, there. My name is Joyce Gallagher and I've lived 19 years at 685 East 40th Avenue, which is directly under one of the sites. I tried to find out about this. Eweb did send out a mailing informing us that they were going to have a meeting. I went to that meeting, the first one in 2020. And after that, we didn't hear anything. We, I put my name on a sheet to sign up to go up the hill with, and they had to explain to me, but somehow that fell through even though I did sign up. So I had no idea that this was going to happen and it was going to be two things. And a month ago, 10 of my neighbors who live very close, we've got people that live a street away from us, from where I live, and that, you know, killed it. There's a 100-year-old, 101-year-old woman that lives on the corner of Hill. Had no idea of this. Thought I had no idea of this. 10 people in the immediate neighborhood had no idea. So I'm asking you why? Why didn't you send out a detailed mailing? I know something appeared in the Eugene Weekly, but unfortunately I missed that. Normally I read the Weekly, but some people don't. So why didn't you not send out a detailed explanation in the mail to your customers? Because we got one about the smart meters. I'm like, thank you for that. But that was it pretty much. And this is a real, you fell down here because if you don't explain things to the neighbors, they're going to think something is wrong. It's just kind of a natural thing. And we feel like we were blindsided. I mean, and we talk to people that live so close and noise is expanded, the noise that sort of appeared up there, it's amplified, the way, the terrain is amplifying noise. So it's going to be very bad for us. We would have liked snow in here. Some people purchased property not knowing what you folks were going to do up there. That's their problem. I'm sorry. But the thing is, you need to do a better job of this. You really fell down on this and a lot of neighbors are noticed. And I wasn't personally contacted. I don't know who of the 45 people we did contact, but where I live, five people lived in that house, okay? And it's too tight.
Thank you. Next up, we have Krista Roha, followed by Boi Johnson.
Hi. I do not live in that neighborhood. I live on River Road, but we've seen the same kind of thing happening out on River Road. We saw the beautiful big leaf mangels taken out. And in the charter, they're not supposed to do that, anything like that again, but they are already talking about taking out the big tall Doug firs for the MS. And they've gone back and forth on that. But the Eweb site was purchased in 55 and the line has been, we've known this coming for a long time, but things have changed. And Eugene pretends to be a green city, what is anything but? They cut down the trees that you were in the middle of. They just cut down trees. They go and plant, they're exactly, but those are going to take a long time to get to where the trees that you're cutting down are. And the thing that's so criminal about what you did yesterday morning, rushing through because you knew that we were mobilizing because people didn't know. And, I mean, the only people who knew were the immediate neighbors. I talked to some of them and they didn't know that the park had been doubled. So, and they have it, like a lot of people in Eugene, there's just a feeling of renegation. And it's really sad. It's terrible for democracy. And that's because all of our institutions are, have just shut the public out pretty much. And it's concerning for somebody who's concerned about the greenwashing that goes on here, the claims of sustainability, you have a beautiful statement, mission statement, but it doesn't in any way come close to what the reality is here. And I'm concerned about if we do not change things now with the crisis, I mean, crisis of water and already several attempts to purchase our water source in the Mackenzie River. I don't know if we can trust you folks to serve the public. And what you're doing here does not engender trust. And I'm looking for a relationship with you that will change that. And if not, I think we need to think about replacing them.
Thank you. Next up, we have Boi Johnson, Bo Johnson, sorry if I didn't pronounce that correctly, followed by Marco Elliott.
So my name is Bo Johnson and I am speaking on my own account myself and also a group of bullish friends with Eugene. I want to compliment you all because what I think you're really good at doing is deceiving them. You deceive the public through your image of being an environmentally conscious company. And I've been on your website multiple times since I've been involved in this. And I've been on your website multiple times since I've been involved in this project, trying to help save this forest. I've seen the way you advertise yourself. How can you say you're environmentally conscious while doing what you're doing? For one, I only heard about this project while I was working my job and saw a fire from safety in the forest. I didn't hear about it from you guys, and I am a U. F. customer, so it's my thing. Secondly, you tore down a forest which is over a hundred and fifty years old, with many mature trees. And being up there, I've been up there previously before you guys had even started tearing down. I saw plenty of wildlife out there that definitely relied on that forest. I talked to people, you know, neighbors that day when I was out there on August 2nd. You guys started cutting clearly before and much after the time that you set schedule for that cutting to happen. I talked to people that didn't know that that project was happening. I saw tears. I saw people crying and mourning over that forest. And the thing is, I don't think you're unique in the fact that you guys are able to advertise yourselves as an environmentally conscious company while doing things that don't represent that. I think what you are is kind of a larger symptom of something that is going on within the entire United States. You take ideas of being environmentally conscious, and you integrate that into yourself so you can mislead the public. And you can continually do things that are actively hurting us and actively hurting your local community. That was a beautiful forest out there, and it was very devastating to see it again. I was out there the entire time when you guys were there. And so I just wanna say congratulations on misleading us. Congratulations upon destroying an urban forest within Eugene. Congratulations on not representing the public, even though you're a public utility. Congratulations on not being able to inform anyone when you are able to, you just chose not to. And just, good job, good job.
Next up, we have Marco Elliott, followed by Marilyn Block.
Commissioners, thank you for finally listening to us in person. I had a lot more than three minutes. I would need a lot more than three minutes to speak to you about my concerns. Anyway, my name is Marco Elliott. I live on Moss Street, Nineteen Forty-four Moss Street. And I believe I'm in Ward, New York. I would like to be positive and give you feedback that can help you. So first of all, I would like to talk about public process. I think the July 6th board meeting that I wished to testify on, but I couldn't, was a total catastrophe in the sense that I heard very eloquent statements from twenty-one people, including a young woman who might have been a teenage girl, who was literally begging for fairness. I remember the word fairness. She claimed that it wouldn't be fair to cut down those trees. Well, I'm a former high school teacher, and I felt crushed when the testimony by witnesses ended. And you guys continued your job and literally ignored this young girl's plea and everybody else's plea. So, and I understand why, because your own Joe Harwood openly stated in the Register Guard recently that you only listen to experts, you don't really care for the public. So my question is, is it really worth for me to pull all the strings of eloquence to reach your hearts if you only listen to experts? So I am familiar with the theory of the absurd. I studied existential philosophy. And this is a totally absurd situation, because I know that I will not change your minds. And I know that what I'm saying will not help you. So as far as a public relations disaster, I made some research, and I found in an old Register Guard article about the Seneca Plant Disaster, your mission statement, caring about our community and the environment. Being flexible, innovative, and adaptable to community needs. And ironically, defining value to the audience of customers. You fail on all of those. And if you're listening to me, take those words home.
Carolyn Block, followed by Will Rutherford.
Hi, Marilyn Block. And I live at thirty-nine thirty Milliard. And I was there yesterday when that very fast cutting down the tree happened. And I cried. I appreciate your having an in-person meeting. I suggest that you have some other arrangements so that you're not with a light background. It's very hard to see. It's a little easier if I'm this close, but I can't see your faces. And also, I suggest that you have bigger name tags, name plates. So this is back here, it's a little bit c. And also, the six gentlemen that spoke. Oh, yeah! The gentleman that spoke first about the lobby, I seconded, I didn't know about this, but I seconded, I didn't hear any of it. I seconded his request to keep the lobby open, to keep your communication with your rate areas flowing as well as you can. And so I would say, improve your phone system, your communication system. It's really hard to get ahold of people. And I tried yesterday to get somebody on the phone, and I had to use email, and it takes two days. Or you have two days to respond for an email request, and I wanted to know about this meeting. So, nobody helped me at all. So my main thing is pay attention, is communicate with the public better. You know, have a meeting, have a meeting about, it's useful to do that, about this project. Have a meeting where people are able to speak. And come to the site, come and see, see what it looks like. I think the trees have been damaged because they went down so fast that they broke each other.
Thank you. Next up, we have Will Rutherford, followed by Chris Jones.
Is it okay to change something?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Will Rutherford. I'm a White House resident, and I buy electricity from E-Web. I have previously voiced concern about your cost of service analysis for electric customers. And what I'd like to do this evening is just kind of formalize some of the things that I've told you, and maybe introduce a couple new things. I have two main concerns. One is a potential increase in my electric bill. The other is E-Web's electric rate adjustment strategy itself. I'd like to start with the strategy part. I believe E-Web is making a strategic mistake by attempting to parse its customer base beyond the current consumption categories. Expanding the customer classes by delivery infrastructure is far too complex to maintain and manage accurately. So my question to you is, do you really understand COSA? And do you really agree with the classes that are being defined or will be defined? I've given you some hypothetical examples. I'm not gonna read them here. Certainly comparing upriver costs to an average of all of the other E-Web customers' delivery costs is, in my mind, not appropriate. Now turn onto the rate adjustment strategy itself. Consider these issues as you contemplate rate adjustments. Apparently, all of E-Web customers contribute to a tax by the city of Eugene, I believe it's maybe six percent, not sure. And upriver customers, they absolutely don't benefit out of this tax, as far as I know. Second, I believe all of E-Web customers bear the burden of repaying bond funding for infrastructure replacements and upgrades and so forth. So how much of this infrastructure investment involves upriver facilities that directly serve upriver customers? I'll take a look at Rod Price's slides from your July 6th meeting. Huge investment proposals, but not to serve the upriver customers. I believe as an upriver customer, I should not have to be encumbered with massive debt that does not provide benefit to me if you elect to single my class out for a rate change. Also consider a cost for underground service. Again, if upriver area of the river is treated separately, why should I share the cost of expensive urban infrastructure upgrades? So if you decide to adjust the upriver rate based on the premise that revenue is all sort of a cost, I urge you to consider, in your conclusion, that you do not pursue electric rate adjustments by using COSA in separate classes of different actual customers, which are really due principles, and that if you do decide to maintain it, do it to your entire territory. Thank you.
Thank you all. Next up, we have Chris Jones, followed by Alan Handcock.
Commissioners, General Manager Lawson, I'm gonna read this. My name is Chris Jones. I live on Kincaid Street in Eugene. And I'm here to express my appreciation for the E-Web staff who put together the preliminary Phase II electrification study, which you'll hear about in this meeting. It's a very thoughtful analysis that incorporated feedback from Phase I given by other staff, commissioners, variety of people. And it continued that study in many useful directions. It had two main components, transportation and building electrification. On transportation, the Phase I report had underestimated the number of electric vehicles that are likely to be on the roads of Oregon, ten and twenty years from now. The Phase II analysis is much more realistic, as you'll see now. Based on trends in electric vehicle markets, the study anticipates a significant market share for EVs just five and ten years from now, essentially reaching one hundred percent of new vehicles by 2030. This target is also right in line with recent legislation in California and in Washington. This is smart scenario planning by E-Web staff. And the analysis shows that E-Web will experience just a one percent increase per year in average in heat loads, which is a very manageable change. The study also shows that current vehicle pricing trends, even without significant E-Web incentives, will result in vehicle electrification that our society needs in order to save off the worst effects of local air pollution and global climate emissions. E-Web can further encourage EV adoption by removing existing barriers. For example, by providing differential demand charges for commercial customers who want to charge their vehicles through off-heat hours. On building electrifications, the analysis is based on economic factors. And you will see that this study is very pessimistic about the electrification of gas, fuel, heating, and hot water systems. The graphs, if you see them, are pretty terrifying. I think that the E-Web analysis is sound. The analysts did a good job. But all reasonable climate analysts tell us that we have to eliminate fossil fuel use in the next ten to twenty years in order to avoid extreme societal costs. So we have to convert nearly one hundred percent of Eugene's space heating and water heating systems in the next ten years to comply with both city and state carbon reduction goals. So the E-Web analysis needs to be shared with local and state lawmakers as soon as possible so that they can create additional financial and policy incentives to accelerate the electrification of buildings. Overall, this report is much improved from Phase I, and I look forward to additional insights and recommendations in the final version. Great job by E-Web staff. Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next up, we have Alan Handcock, followed by Joseph Hubble.
Hi, Alan Handcock, Twenty-two Forty-four Alders Street. And sometimes what seems like an imperative at the time doesn't seem so imperative in hindsight. And no example of this is more obvious than E-Web's board's decision to build a nuclear power plant on the Florence in the nineteen-sixties. I'm gonna quote a little bit from Bob Warren, who's a longtime Eugene resident, who wrote an article about this. In nineteen seventy, E-Web ran an ad in the Register Guard in bold print. It says, "Vote no on Measure Fifty-Two. Save your nuclear power plant." E-Web was predicting a huge demand for power that could only be met, they asserted, with a nuclear option. Questions began to emerge about the cost and the safety of nuclear power. In July sixty-nine, City Council had a public meeting with E-Web to discuss whether E-Web should hold a public hearing about the nuke. Citizens at the meeting were not allowed to speak, and E-Web announced it would not hold a public hearing. A small group of people walked out of the meeting, determined to be heard. A day later, E-Web changed its mind and scheduled a public meeting, but it was too late. E-Web's continued arrogance had created a group that in the end would win the battle and stop E-Web's nuclear dreams. E-Web had at first dismissed the protesters as annoyances and treated them with scarcely disguised hostility. Community members in nineteen sixty-nine put a measure on the ballot. However, rather than calling for outright ban, they opted for a more moderate ballot measure, calling for a four-year moratorium, and hoped that four years, E-Web would come to its senses. And they adopted the slogan, "We can wait, we should wait." E-Web fought back hard and created Citizens for the Orderly Development of Electricity to oppose the ballot measure to promote nuclear energy. On May twenty-sixth, nineteen seventy, Measure Fifty-Two passed. E-Web would have to wait four years before fulfilling its nuclear dreams. The lesson was not lost on E-Web. In nineteen seventy-four, E-Web formally acknowledged it when Keith Parks, the new general manager, said, "The activists did a great fair for this community. They saved its butt." Well, history repeats itself, as citizens are still saying, "We can wait, we should wait."
Joseph Hubble, eight-ten, thirty-sixth place. I became aware of this project through a door, somebody put a poster on my front door. And it wasn't that long ago. And I lived fairly close. Then I spoke with some friends who felt the same way, that E-Web had not done a good job, a woefully inadequate job of notifying the public. There was a meeting to take place at the site soon after I found out. And I went up there with a friend, and it was a meeting to find
with a friend, and it was a meeting to find out, we should do, make it beautiful, after we're done blowing the place up. Lipstick on a face. I asked the people that I kind of disrupted the meeting, along with my friend, and it's like, hold on, hold on, you guys did a great job of reaching out to the public. Just a few neighbors in the area with such a massive project? Are you kidding me? That's disgusting. Horrible, woeful job. And the communications supervisor, Jen, agreed. "I did a horrible job," she said. "I take responsibility." I said, "Great, let's mitigate this. Let's get some communication going. By the way, this three-minute thing, this crap hole, we've got to be able to talk to each other. Are you the brain trust? Are you the brain trust here? You know it all, because you have the experts. You ask the experts. You talk to them. I haven't asked them. I'm an intelligent guy. You guys are volunteers. Volunteers, that's all you are. At this point, I am disgusted with your job, and I think you should all quit en masse."
All right, so those are all the clips that we have. So the public testimony period, so this meeting is now closed. At this time, commissioners are given the opportunity to comment if they choose, so I'd like to know if anyone has any comments.
She looking to the old man.
I am looking to you, John.
I'll go. Thank you all for coming here, and I have a lot of things to say, but I'll be tempered in what I say, because, as you know, many of you have contacted us, but a lot of people that aren't here have contacted us too. Which, in fact, we have a very challenging job. As you know, OHA, somebody just told us that we have a couple of years to get rid of College Hill. We can't just shut that down. It serves 80,000 people. We have to replace it before we do. Doing a triple bottom line analysis on the 40th site that we've owned for over 70 years, the people, including this bishop that's involved in this, knows, and she knew when she bought her home and chasen to it, that this was going to be a reservoir. So when we're doing a bottom 50B analysis, we've built one or two. We've built one, we still have to remove the trees for the second one. If we can't build one, and then three years later blast right next to it. So we have to do all the tree removal as minimally as we can. Now, the man that talked about the Opus Sabana, thank you. I have built hundreds of acres that we have in a spotted owl habitat. When the feds came in and put the easement on us for that, we have 60-acre Opus Sabana habitat, removed all the fir trees because of nothing happened. Thank you for bringing that up. But what my point is, whether we build one or two, we still remove the same amount of trees, because the last thing we're going to do is build a 7.5 million gallon reservoir and then blast right next to it three years later. By doing this project together, we save 2,000 truckloads that we're not going to go run up down Patterson and disrupt it and make a four-and-a-half-year project versus, we're going to save a lot of time, we're going to save $1.5 million. And so we're doing the best we can with the information we have. We're not going to rely on a motion to make a multimillion-dollar decision that affects 8,000 people. Thank you.
A rebuttal, please?
No.
Yeah, because you don't allow it.
Well, I'm sorry. This isn't a back and forth. Is there anybody else we'd like to say anything?
Sure, yeah, I'll be admitting. I do want to say thanks to folks for coming out and sharing their thoughts with us. I think we all share appreciation for that site, and really, I don't think anybody wants to see trees removed.
Keep going.
I'll try and need remind a little bit more, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't, I think we all share an appreciation for this site, and I don't think anybody wants to see trees removed. And at the same time, the functioning of our community-wide water system relies on expansion of that same water system, so that water ends remain usable and safe for us to consume. Anyway, I did, I want to say thanks for coming in and sharing your thoughts, and we do hear what you're saying. And on balance, given all the things that this organization has to balance, it absolutely feels right, like the right decision to make. I trust our engineers that if there were alternatives that were viable, we would be doing them. And I trust our communication folks that they did the very best they could during a challenging time of COVID, where we're all trying to communicate as best we can. And it may not be adequate for your needs, but I do trust that our team did the very best they could, given the circumstances. And lastly, the comment about scale, I think is spot on. This is a two-acre site, this is not make or break greenhouse gas emissions, or cooling, or other environmental impacts in Eugene.
It's symbolic.
And I would say, on balance, when we look at what EWEB is doing to preserve and maintain forests and watershed, that intensity to protect our water, and preserving forest lands up there, EWEB is making a much greater investment in forest preservation than this particular site, or the whole trees on this particular site. So I know it's a trade-off, I know it stinks, I also know that our team's going to do everything we can in trying to reduce the impacts for neighbors there. I know it's going to be hard for folks who live right next to that site, but I do trust that this board and the staff team working with us are doing the very best we can.
We don't, that's the problem.
And I understand, and we're all elected officials, and folks who are, you know, more than capable of running against us, and in this voluntary seat, so there is great reward, fame, and fortune. Thank you.
EWEB was silent on what we're hearing.
I'm sorry, this is not a back and forth. You've had your chance to speak, and now it's our turn to press one.
You're silent on the technical.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for all reaching out to me directly through voicemails and emails. I did my best to contact anybody who contacted me and respond. You know, I heard, like Commissioner Brown said, I heard both sides of this issue. Just because I may not agree with your stance on it, doesn't mean that I didn't hear you. I do, I do agree with what was said, that our communication, we can learn from this as far as moving forward on the communications with our ratepayers and the affected communities that we touch, and I hope as a board and as a staff, we do learn from this experience and do a better job in the future. That's something that I'll be pushing for. I do feel that I made the right decision when I voted to give the general manager the authority to move forward with this project, and I'm comfortable with that decision. I'm sorry that there are people that don't agree with that opinion, but I felt that that was the right decision to make at that time, and I'll live with the consequences. So I appreciate you guys coming out, I do hear you, and I hope we can move past this and make this into a site going forward that will be a place for the community to enjoy in perpetuity after the construction is done.
All right, so lastly, I want to echo thanking everybody for coming tonight. I also want to thank everybody for following the mask mandate. I really appreciate that everybody has followed those rules, so thank you. It's no fun to wear a mask, but it's just something we have to do. I am going to actually comment on something else. I agree with what my fellow commissioners have said about the water storage site, but I have a comment about the lobby being kept open, and, Frank, maybe at some point you can just remind us what our policy was about that, or what we were doing with the lobby, because I can't remember. That's something we talked about previously. And then also, in response to Will Rutherford's comments about COSA, I believe it's next board meeting where we have more discussion about that topic, so thank you for coming to speak about that and reminding us that that is left on the docket. Frank, anything you'd like to say?
I don't have anything to add, Commissioners. You covered it.
All right, thank you. All right, we're moving along on our agenda to board action items. We are on item number four, approval of consent calendar A.
I'll move to approval set L, ready? Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We'll have to see if we're covered ourselves.
Calendar A is...
I'm sorry, I'm going to move it to second.
I believe...
Yep. I moved it up, consent calendar B.
Who asked you seconded that?
No.
Oh.
Well, I wanted to pull an item.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I would move to, or I would second to you, moving of it without number eight.
All right, so all those in favor of consent calendar B minus item number eight, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, and now, item number eight.
Yeah, this is an item two that deals with the public testimony, and I, while I'm in favor of it, it just came to us, and I don't think the board has really had an opportunity to discuss it, and I also feel that without Commissioner Carlson here to weigh in on it, I just didn't feel comfortable, and I don't know if it's something that's timely that needs to be done at this meeting or not. So that's one of the reasons I wanted to pull it, to see if there was more discussion from the commission, if this is the right amount of time, amount of input that we want to do. So that's what I wanted to forward, just to have a little bit more discussion on.
Just to comment, there is no specific timeframe on this, Commissioner Barosky. What we tried to capture was, the previous policy was nebulous, and so we tried to capture what had been historically standard practice, but there's nothing that is urgent this month versus next month or the month after that.
I'd be willing to just leave it off and wait, you know, table the dates of it forward.
I would just like to clarify whether you'd like to actually have a discussion, or whether you would want to bring it back at a future consent calendar item, where the board could have a more thorough discussion with Commissioner Carlson present.
I would prefer to have four years, I think.
As a consent item in the future.
Well, can we, if we can vote as a consent item and discuss it.
Yes, that's correct.
That's easy, we can discuss it right now if we wanted to.
Right.
And so there's no procedural issue about doing that, and he can have an agenda, unless you want to. We can vote, put it on the consent calendar for the next month's meeting, vote and discuss it if you want, maybe take 10 minutes or whatever, but in the interim, we'll have a lot of time to study.
Yeah, may I suggest October, if then, Commissioner Barosky will not be here next month.
Possibly, it will be.
If there's not a sense of urgency, we'll put it on the consent calendar for October and have bullet as a discussion item.
That would work great for me, thank you.
Okay, great. All right.
We passed the consent calendar, we just pulled it.
Okay. Item number seven, moving in general business, we have Lieber evaluation and triple bottom line results and review.
Good evening, Commissioners, can you hear me okay? Emily Segrenz, electric generation manager. Joining tonight is Mark Sinnerker, our generation engineering supervisor, and Patty Boyle, our generation contract supervisor. We'll be providing an update on the proposed path forward and decision-making process for the Lieber hydroelectric project. Tonight, we're asking the board to provide feedback on our proposed work plan to arrive at a quarter for 2022 recommendation to pursue either the stormwater conveyance or return-to-service option for the Lieber hydroproject. This is part of our organizational goal 4B, to collaborate and align with the board to develop directional guidelines using a triple bottom line-based approach for the Lieber project, in compliance with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and in collaboration with the Mackenzie Valley community. Quick agenda for tonight's presentation. I'll be providing a brief background and review of what's occurred to date. I'll then give a high-level overview of the process and decisions that will need to be made over the next 10 years or so. We'll give you results of our preliminary triple bottom line analysis. We'll go into greater detail of a work plan for the next year and a half or so. We'll provide updates on work that has been completed since the February board meeting, discuss near-term risk reduction measures that are needed to ensure we're able to safely convey stormwater in the short term. And then finally, we'll look ahead beyond 2023, and what that decision process might look like, and then move on to board input. So for background, the Lieber project is part of a joint operating license with the hydro, or, excuse me, with the Walterville project. License was issued in 2000 and expires in 2040, so we have approximately 20 years left on the current license term. Because both licensers are under the same license, they're tied to each other from a regulatory perspective. What that means is the near and long-term decision on Lieber has an effect on the Walterville project as well. The Lieber project has been out of service since October of 2018 due to significant concerns over the safety of the canal embankment. It's been operating as a stormwater conveyance facility since then. Comprehensive risk assessments were completed in 2020, and out of that, it's clear that substantial canal safety improvements are needed to return the canal to safe and reliable power generation. Canal safety improvements are also needed to continue to operate safely as a stormwater conveyance, but the scope and expense of those improvements are significantly less than the return-to-service option. Ultimately, we need to decide if we want to continue to operate as a stormwater conveyance facility or return to service for the purposes of power generation during this current license term. The Lieber canal has been a feature in the Mackenzie Valley for 90 years, and during that time, a portion of the Mackenzie River has been diverted through it, and businesses and residences have grown up around it. What that means is there are many stakeholders who are directly impacted by both the near and long-term future of the canal. It's also important to realize that the near-term decision has an impact on our long-term path As a reminder, the two options that we're considering for the Lieber project are, one, the return-to-service option, where we would repair or rebuild significant portions of the canal as necessary for power generation. The second is a more permanent conversion to stormwater conveyance, where there'd be no diversion of the Mackenzie River into the canal, so that's basically what's been happening since 2018. And then we'd also need to repair or rebuild some portions of the canal as necessary for safe stormwater conveyance to the river. At the February board meeting, staff presented an updated net present value analysis based on 2019 forward close sale prices. That analysis included head limits for cost of capital improvements under the stormwater conveyance and return-to-service scenarios. Now, based on that information, it was clear that within the remaining license period, the stormwater conveyance option is the lower-cost option from an economic perspective. The NPV of the stormwater conveyance scenario, based on that analysis, is negative $50 million, while the return-to-service option was up to negative $80 million. For context, in order to break even on the investment to return to service, power values would need to be between $105 per megawatt hour and $180 per megawatt hour, or roughly two and a half to four and a half times higher than the current forecast of about $40 per hour during that same period. And remember, this was a preliminary analysis only, and it doesn't include decommissioning or relicensing scenarios that can greatly impact the financial outcome of either option. Therefore, understanding the timing and scope of potential relicensing or decommissioning is necessary before we can develop a long-term financial estimate of the project. Tonight, we'll be walking you through our proposed path to get to a board recommendation at the end of 2022 to pursue either the stormwater conveyance or return-to-service option in the near term, so the current license term. Now, in order to effectively evaluate that plan, it's important to understand that the... Now, in order to effectively evaluate that plan, it's important to understand that the near-term decision will set the direction for the path we take in the long term. Now, the decision to pursue one option or another does not necessarily prevent our ability to change course, but it would be highly inefficient from both a schedule and cost perspective. For example, the return to service option, the investment required is substantial enough to presume that relicensing the project is necessary to recover those expenses. Similarly, converting to the stormwater conveyance facility requires significant regulatory effort and potential decommissioning, planning, and deployment. We've targeted the end of 2022 for a recommendation to the board for multiple reasons. The first is the potential for board turnover in January 2023. Our plan is to walk through this together over the next year and a half as we continue to gather information, so that the current board has ample opportunity to digest the information periodically and provide feedback and direction throughout. In addition to that, waiting longer means that we may unintentionally default to the stormwater conveyance option. The longer we wait, the more likely it is that significant investments in generating equipment and additional canal maintenance would be required to ultimately return to service, so that changes the equation as time goes on. And I'll walk through this slide in more detail at the end of the presentation. Now, the decision to operate as either a stormwater conveyance or a return to service has impacts well beyond economics. In addition to the finances, we also want the board to understand the implications of either option on the environment and the community. As such, we've developed a preliminary triple bottom line analysis to help inform our work plan between now and the end of 2022. And many of the items identified in the TBL require further research to understand the nature and scope of the impact, and more work is needed to verify our assumptions. Additionally, several items, such as regulatory constraints, were identified as critical path topics to verify that both return to service and stormwater conveyance are truly viable options in the near term. Research on several of these issues has been completed and will be presented tonight. Others have been prioritized in our work plan. Again, this is a preliminary triple bottom line only, and it will be updated and expanded as we continue to gather information over the next year and a half. The full results of the TBL are included as an appendix in the board memo. We'll present our high-level takeaways now, but we encourage everyone to look at the full results to truly understand the breadth of issues. The stormwater conveyance option is favorable in the near term for financial and safety reasons. It's the lower cost option and reduces the likelihood and effect of a catastrophic embankment failure. It's also generally favorable environmentally, but there are many questions that remain related to water quality and carbon impacts. For example, we don't fully understand the impact to water quality of operating long-term as a stormwater conveyance facility, and there is the potential for adverse conditions from stagnant water or sediment in the canal that may be periodically flushed to the river during storm events. Notably, the stormwater conveyance option has marked social impacts on the upriver community. For example, loss of irrigation opportunities from the canal can directly affect agricultural businesses and residents. The return to service option is favorable from a local community and social impact perspective, but is financially expensive in the near term. The return to service option is also generally unfavorable environmentally as compared to the stormwater conveyance option, but again, many questions remain, specifically around water quality and carbon. Again, full results are provided in the board memo, and these are general conclusions only. The nature and scope of the impacts will be verified over the next year and a half. The TBL was used to develop our work plan between now and the end of 2022, focusing on the additional information needed to make an informed recommendation on the future of the canal. We will be bringing information to the board periodically as identified in this roadmap. This may be through memos, board meetings, work sessions, and field trips, so that the board has ample opportunity to ask questions and provide feedback. A few topics, such as regulatory constraints, were identified as critical path items, and work on several of these has been completed since February. These are the items you see in orange on the graphic. The first is the TBL we just discussed. The second is a legal analysis of regulatory options that was presented to the board in executive session. The third is an analysis of water rights and obligations, the results of which will be presented in a few moments. Moving forward, we have the following deliverables in our work plan. The first is a communication and stakeholder engagement strategy that will be completed by the end of this year for implementation in 2022. The next step is a water quality technical analysis that we've prioritized with a target date of quarter one, 2022. We would then develop likely decommissioning and relicensing scenarios to inform the near-term decision, including both infrastructure needs and other things like what replacement power line looks like. We do need a better understanding of what the suite of options is, so that they can be considered in the near-term decision. Now, as a reminder, decommissioning and relicensing are negotiated agreements involving multiple regulatory agencies and stakeholders, and without going through that process, we can't say exactly what either decommissioning or relicensing would look like. However, we would like the board to have an understanding of the general range of options. We would then take the scenarios from the scenario development stage and put estimates of cost for implementing those scenarios. Again, this would include not only infrastructure costs, but also things like replacement power and financing options such as federal funding or bonds. We take all that information we gathered and expand the triple bottom line analysis so that it's more comprehensive. Finally, we come to the board at the end of 2022 with a recommendation to pursue either the stormwater conveyance or return to service option during this current license term. Now, I'll move on to results of work that's been completed since February. There are a few general conclusions from the legal analysis of regulatory options. If the stormwater conveyance option is chosen, there are multiple regulatory paths that exist. The appropriate path is largely dependent on whether or not we want to preserve our ability to relicense the project after the current license term expires. For the return to service option, again, the near-term investment is substantial enough to presume that relicensing the project is necessary to recover those expenses. It's important to note that either option has significant regulatory process and expense associated with it, and there is no easy answer here. I would like to hand it over to Mark Zinnaker to discuss water rights and near-term risk reduction measures.
Thank you, Lisa. Little information here about the water rights. Uh, this table summarizes our situation. Uh, the first line on the table, uh, gives the context where we have about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five properties along the length of the canal. And then, a subset of those do have water rights, um, twenty-two, and they break down into a few additional categories here. First category are agreements with limited obligation to water supply, of which there are four, and those agreements date back to the original construction of the canal. They're nineteen-twenty-eight vintage agreements, because the canal was intercepting tributary creeks that were supplying properties downstream. So those are reflected in the, uh, the three associated with Coxwell Creek and one associated with Hanson Creek. There were others that were developed in nineteen-twenty-eight, but they've been retired and replaced by new agreements. Uh, the next category are agreements with, without the supply guarantees. These would have been developed after construction of the canal, when it was, uh, clear to EWEB that the ability to, uh, deliver water was disruptable. We could have, damn, safety issues, operational issues, and as a result, those agreements did clearly identify the, um, the lack of guarantee, that depending on operational constraints, that water may not be available. So we've got twelve, um, that fall in that category, um, and then, thirteen rather, and one of which includes the Mackenzie Hattery agreement with the Corps of Engineers that was made in the nineteen-seventies. And then finally, there's another five water rights agreements that do not have, um, agreements with, with EWEB at all and are in that category of being disruptable. I did want to also, you know, highlight that in, in this, in the meantime, while, uh, the canal is drawn down and these water right holders are figuring out solutions, um, in the initial couple of years, there was enough leakage through the intake gates that many of those water right users were able to limp by, um, with just a couple of feet of water in the canal. However, uh, this past winter, due to debris loading from the Holiday Farm fire, those intake gates completely sealed, and there was essentially no water. All we had coming in were these tributary creeks, and so to help out our commercial irrigators that were relying on that for their farming activities, we did install four irrigation check dams, um, for those commercial enterprises that backed up the water no more than two feet, that met FERC's requirements, but kept the irrigators able to limp, continue to limp by. I did want to run back to this, uh, table real quick to point out that one of the, one of the things we've been doing with respect to the water rights is identifying potential alternatives for those irrigators. And, um, just to summarize what those are, in those cases where, um, the water right is not of great value, buying, buying that out is a possibility. For those that really do depend on the water right, converting their, um, surface water right to a groundwater right is one alternative we can look into, and the other is moving the point of diversion from the canal to the, um, Mackenzie River itself. And then the other topic I wanted to touch on was the near-term risk reduction measures. As Lisa mentioned, even though we're in a stormwater conveyance mode, we are not operating risk-free, and that's because the canal intercepts a number of creeks, as shown on this figure, the two largest of which are Johnson Creek and Coxwell Creek. And so our focus, um, in terms of near-term risk production will be on, um, on how to manage that stormwater condition, because during a severe storm, those creeks can't actually put it in to the canal more water than we actually operate with under normal power generation activities. So the strategy there is to try to focus in, um, on a couple of, uh, key areas of canal that are, um, highlighted in the blue by installing canal plugs such that those larger creeks that flow in, um, can be, um, focused into those blue areas of the canal and routed to the closest, uh, return point to the river. The purple portions of the canal that are only capturing smaller-sized creeks and stormwater runoff, um, they don't need as much attention or investment, um, because they don't present as much risk. So that's, our strategy would be to focus in on those, um, higher-risk areas that see high stormwater flows. Those investments would be conducted in a manner that tries to preserve value for both a, a, a future permanent stormwater conveyance, um, operation, or would also, uh, be of value to a conversion, uh, a return to service scenario where they're operating once again for power generation. That, thanks, back to Lisa.
All right, great. This is the graphic you saw at the beginning of the presentation. I wanted to make a few points here. Again, the path forward after 2022 depends on the path chosen, the option chosen. Again, the decision to pursue stormwater conveyance or return to service doesn't necessarily prevent us from changing course, but it's highly inefficient. So what that means is we really do need to start considering our long-term strategy sooner rather than later. Couple of things I want to point out, um, on, on these two options. The timelines depicted are approximate, and they're just intended to give the board a general sense of phasing. Under the return to service scenario, you see that there are, again, substantial infrastructure improvements that are required. Those would generally take place between 2023 and 2028-ish, with an estimated return to power generation of about 2028. Now, I think this is a relatively optimistic, um, timeline and schedule, given the significant improvements that are needed and the associated permitting and regulatory process, and that's probably our best-case scenario to return to power generation. And again, as I've stated many times, the return to service option does presume that relicensing the project is necessary to get a return on that investment. So we've shown, um, starting our relicensing proceedings in 2030, and that's ten years ahead of our, our license expiration date, and that's the general timing that, um, most hydro owners use when, um, trying to figure out how long it'll take to get an additional license. Didn't quite pan out for us that way for Carmen, but ten years should be enough. For the stormwater conveyance, um, option, again, there are infrastructure improvements that are needed, and Mark just went through some of those. Those would also generally take place around between the 2023 to 2028, um, timing. The difference with this path is that, you know, around 2025, we would want to recommend a regulatory path forward and start those regulatory proceedings shortly after that. All right, that's the end of the formal, uh, presentation. Uh, again, we're asking for board feedback on our proposed work plan, and very specifically, we're speaking, we're asking for feedback on whether our plan includes the critical pieces of information necessary along a suitable timeline and with sufficient opportunities for review and input. And I put our, um, our work plan between now and the end of 2022 up on the slide for reference. With that, I'll hand it back over to Frank and the board.
Anybody that wants to jump in to first?
Can I just ask for a quick, uh, repeat of what your team's feedback on, you just mentioned.
Yeah, it's really, is this the right information? So the things we have identified on this timeline, is it the right information? Is the timeline suitable? And are there, um, appropriate opportunities for you to review information and provide feedback?
I'm gonna go ahead and jump in since I am in control of that. Um, so, I don't want to sound like a broken record, because I've stopped this up several times, but I am a little concerned about the timeline and making sure that we have a really thorough understanding. I, this is my third year on the board, and I feel like this is one of the biggest decisions as a board that we will be making since my time on the board. And we also have a bunch of other really important things that are coming up in the near future. And so, um, it can be really easy to get overwhelmed with all this information. I won't speak for my other board members, but I will tell you for me, I'm not an excellent in it. And, um, I, I'm not saying that it's not doable on this timeline, but I really want to be thoughtful in how we can move forward and make sure that we all have the information that we need. We've talked about having more work sessions. I think if we have like one or two work sessions on this, it's not going to be enough. And I also understand, um, the expediency of the timeline, that you want to make sure that the current board is the one that's making these decisions, so you don't have to start all over if there's new people on the board. But what I fear is that we don't give enough time and dedication to it, that we're gonna either have a split board at the end, or people are not gonna want to make a decision, because it, it really is huge, and it's kind of scary and daunting to think that this is what we're deciding on. So, this is gonna, I'm gonna, I am gonna become a broken record, because I'll probably say something like this similarly with other big projects that we're doing, but I really, I'm just gonna advocate that we figure out a way to dedicate more time to this. John?
Oh, thank you. Uh, I don't envy your task. This is probably one of the toughest decisions I've made in 14 years. I just think some of the questions that I'm gonna have before I'm gonna be able to give direction about the economics about this, uh, and give you an example. So I see a negative net present value on the stormwater of thirty million, forty million, but I was around, uh, on the board when we finalized this, and that was a hundred and twenty million cost to be licensed, plus or minus, and just take that straight line and appreciate it, and so if we have that stranded unadvertised cost, how come that isn't added, fifty million bucks, how come that's not added to net present value of thirty from the storm? Because we're gonna lose that investment, we're not gonna be able to capture it to generation, and so those are things like that. The other thing, we missed the temperature, ODFW forgot to put the temperature requirement in the lower river, I guarantee that's coming back this time. And are we gonna, with climate change and all this other thing, are we gonna even be able to generate in the summer months? Because we're not gonna be able to meet the temperature mandate. So details like that, I'm sorry to get in the weeds now, but that's the type of stuff that I'm gonna want to see, because, and I'm also want to understand about, uh, whether or not this qualify, the product that we produce there, if we return to service qualifies a rec, and you can sell it on the market and give somebody else the, the rec standard, and you can sell it at a much higher thing, because I've been in two major decisions, Seneca and Carmen, when you had four power prices of a whole lot more than you're talking about here, and that year, you were two hundred and some odd dollars to make Carmen work than worth twenty. And so, I'm gonna be a hard sell on this future price thing, but you know, I'm not very smart about that stuff, but I remember, and so those are the types of things I'm gonna look for, is getting into the weeds, and I agree with Niddy, that we got a lot of weeds to crawl through. This thing is, uh, is very, very complex. It's, it's, every time we crack them, every time we knock one down, two more are gonna pop up. And I got a feeling that other people on this board are gonna ask similar questions, not that I'm asking, so, um... So I appreciate what you're doing. I'm looking forward to it, but I think we're going to have to allocate pretty good chunk of time to make sure we make that right decision because, you know, when you say net present value, negative stormwater, that's perpetuity. That's forever. And I don't know how we calculate a net negative present value forever when we have something that's going to cost us forever. And we don't have finite time when it stops because it never stops. And so I need to understand that concept. So those are the types of things I'm looking for. Thank you. So.
Go ahead. You're up. All right. Well, first, thanks for the presentation and the background. There's a lot of work that goes into this. How about a handful of comments? One, having done TBL analyses like this for a local government, I know what's involved. It's time-consuming especially to really get into the details. And I don't know what the resource looks like to do the kind of the next piece of that, but I think it might be worth considering bringing in outside help mostly so that we have a third party view of that, that our TBL isn't self-generated. I think it provides us credibility and some objectivity if we have a third party involved in some way, do they include all that? Just something to think about in terms of the TBL process. And the TBL has also helped here super helpful. I appreciate your service. I agree with Mindy about the time to go to speed and not a broken record. Yes, holy cow, the decisions that this board are going to choke down over the next few years. Frank, can you do something about it? No, there's not enough water in this picture. So I will reiterate my willingness and interest in doing meetings every other week or twice a month so that we have more time to process and perhaps we shorten some of our meetings as Mindy has pointed out, like three or four hour-long meetings where I'm running a little bit. So I encourage us to, you know, take that time, assuming the other board members are game for that, just feel like there's something else to do here. There is no good answer, as you said, I was waiting for you to deliver one. Like, what's the easy solution? Just share it with us. And so I think especially the interaction with the folks upstream who live nearby those to me is perhaps my, I have a couple of concerns. One is how much outreach we can do. Not that we're going to satisfy everybody, but I do want us as a board to do what we can to try and reduce the negative impacts on people, whatever decision we make. And I think we have an obligation to those neighbors to really do our best to help them get the water they need or get the other things that they need within the constraints that we're working in. And otherwise, and I mentioned this in the past as well, and I mentioned to Frank earlier, all things being equal from my perspective, water temperatures are not going to get cooler, the water quality is not going to get better, the constraints on us going forward are only going to get more difficult. And especially when we look at the fish in this river that are likely to become endangered. I just want us to think about that from my perspective. We'll be doing the board in 2040 a huge favor if we're thinking about the fish today. Not that the fish are the only thing, but of all things being equal, from my perspective, that's got to be the good path for me along, as I said, and try and make them fall to the best of all. I think I'll stop there.
Yeah, for me, one of the things that, on one of your slides that came out was on the triple bottom line, stormwater had favorable environmental and the return to service had unfavorable environmental. But when I went into the program, I saw a lot of favorables in return to service as opposed to unfavorable. So that needs some clarification. I mean, one of them was fish. There was a, wasn't impacted fish on return to service. For me, I, again, I put out there, I'm probably leaning towards return to service for a number of reasons. But it's early on, and I will definitely listen to all kinds of input and read as many technical briefings as I can get to. But, you know, a couple of things that stick out to me that help with that is, one, the complications of if we surrender the license or amend the license and the can of worms that that's going to open up. Two, this is base power load that is green and something that we've had in the past. And to me, that's something that even if it's only 10 and 8 megawatts, that's 18 megawatts that's not getting burned, right? So for me, that's something that I think is valuable. And also in the triple bottom line, if we're going to stormwater conveyance, are we going to look at removing the dam, you know, and making the river a free-flowing river again? Because that's probably the best thing for environmental. You know, I'm not sure, but you know, you keep hearing people saying, you know, tear down dams and make free-flowing rivers. Well, if we're not using that dam except for to do stormwater conveyance, we could probably pull off a little channel and have that go through. So is that going to be part of the triple bottom line and the thing that we're looking at going forward? And also to what Commissioner Brown brought up, you know, the money that we've invested in this over the years, both physical dollars and community dollars, you know, communities have been built up around this infrastructure. And that needs to be, in my mind, that's something that I will be weighing in on, you know, when I help make me my decision. You know, there's, there's communities up there that have historically been impacted and thrive around these infrastructures that we put in place. And it might be our duty to put them back there. It's going to be expensive either way. So those are some of the questions that I'll be looking for. And I'm happy to dig into these things and meet one-on-ones or in board meetings, to dig in further.
So thank you, commissioners. I kind of feel like Professor Lisa just gave you the syllabus to the class. And now you need to have time to study. But as good professors, we're going to have to work hard and help you pass the tests.
God, somebody's going to help.
So 2022 is an interesting timeframe. It's not that we're expecting any commissioners to actually leave us necessarily, but it also coincides pretty well with the Integrated Resource Plan, which talks about the value of the different types of resources going forward. So I think that's a complimentary piece of work. That's another class you'll be taking throughout this couple of years. And there is a lot of work here. And I think what we have found is that, and what we've heard is you need time. This is, this is a, if you think about the remaining period of the license and then another license potentially on top of that, you know, we're talking 50, 60 years worth of decision that this board will probably not make fully on its own, but will have to set up the right criteria and the right options for a future board. And there's just a number of components to that, including the community component, which is incredibly important here. It has been there for almost 100 years, and, which means it served its time really, really well, but the question remains whether it should continue to serve in that capacity or a new one. There is, there is value from an environmental perspective, impacts both to the river and to the climate related to carbon. This project can also be influenced by the climate with reduced water flows and other things, temperatures. So there's a lot of complexity here. We understand that. We, we're trying to do this in a way that you don't have to bite off the elephant all in one. I'm sure elephants are protected, so I better not use that as an example, but we're going to work through a process, but.
Use the organ.
I'm not using the organ either. So I think there's just a lot here. I do like the idea of some third-party checks and balances on things and a lot of outreach to the upper community. Are you getting what you need?
Yeah, absolutely. I second that. I did want to just touch briefly on the TBL and the results of that. And Commissioner Borowski, you're correct, it's kind of hard when you look at the table to figure out what's favorable, which, you know, how to weigh the options. And the reality is, we don't have a good way to weight the pros and cons of each, right? And so when we make sort of overarching statements that things are generally favorable or not, it really depends on the view of the landscape from where you're standing, right? And so those are the types of things that I do believe a third party could help us with, to, could help kind of put those things into context for us. But the reality is, there's impacts and benefits in all three buckets, social, environmental, and economic for either option. And what is favorable or not, again, depends on your perspective. And so it's going to be difficult to draw real broad general conclusions.
Can I just speak to that? So, so for me, I agree with what you're saying, but in some of the things that we just, that we're learning from our public outreach is, when you put that up on a slide in a board meeting that says favorable or unfavorable, that's there. And that it can be taken and used and said, you know, EWEB says it's unfavorable for return to service, environmental, right? Because that's a slide that got presented at a board meeting, and now it lives there. And so if you're saying that, you know, it's mixed, just make sure that we put caveats next to that if we're going to be putting them up on slides, especially on triple bottom line type things.
Yeah, understood. And I'll take that to heart and I'll take ownership of that because I'm the one who actually came up with the conclusions from the TBL. And just to, you know, to explain for the record why it was my assumption that the return to service was generally less favorable environmentally, and that's just based on the fact that diversion of water into a canal, potential temperature impacts, impacts to, you know, migrating fish and, you know, macro invertebrate, it's very much around the ecology of the river itself. But that doesn't get at things like carbon impacts. So again, there's, you know, it's, it's relative.
Yeah, I just got a couple more comments about the carbon. I appreciate you mentioning that, that there are a number of environmental impacts we have to consider. When it comes to carbon, it seems like, well, hydro, baseload hydro, hydro can be very helpful, but it's also at the prices that it seems like we're talking about these costing, it just can't compete with other sources of low-carbon electricity. PV, utility scale PV being anywhere from 30 to 40 or 50 dollars per watt hour in the same range. Granted, that's, you know, under great conditions, but it will be hard for us, I think, with this, these projects to really compete in terms of providing low-carbon electricity. Is that, as you know, you had, I just want, is that right? Is that a correct assumption?
Yeah, I think when we look at electrification, one of the things that we recognize is that being competitive in that environment is also important from a customer's perspective. These are not, this is not stored hydro, which can have a peak capacity impact on the system, which is typically when the carbon intensity of the electric system is its highest. These are run-of-the-river hydro, which means it's available when it's available. And one of the things that the resource plan will do, it'll look at the characteristics of resources like run-of-the-river hydro and say, what do we think that's worth? Which is the, what is the replacement cost to that? So I think your point is spot on. The value relative to carbon is going to be, what are the other options? What are the avoided costs? What are the values that that contributes toward capacity and growth flexibility? So those are the characteristics that we'll look at, but you're absolutely right.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And the other question I have, and this may be way out there, but may, I suspect we've considered it, it's understandable. I know there's a ton of, there would be a ton of difficulty associated with actually removing the canal, that's the former river channels that used to run and have been built upon, as I understand it. But from my perspective, given the long-term cost of operability to stormwater conveyance and the negative impacts on water quality, whatever we do, it would be interesting to at least consider what would it look like for us to buy out those property owners if there, if there was a reasonable way to do that, that didn't, enemies in that area, you know, not, not talking about condemning properties, but is that something that could be considered? Restoring those river channels back to their former state so that we're not continuing to operate a stormwater conveyance system in perpetuity, you know, at fairly significant expense? And then, it seems like part of that calculation too, is there's a ton of land there that could perhaps offset some of the cost of moving back. I don't know what that looks like, but it'd be interesting to hear what you all have thought about. I know that's been, I don't know. I suspect you all have thought about that some interesting, these are your thoughts on that.
I just add to that, if you do that about, you know, getting rid of the canal and going down back down to the natural stream bed, don't we have two miles of canal below Walterville that people have water foot homes and bridges across and everything else that would now be just a big rock ditch?
On Walterville, on the tail race. And so that would be an issue.
Yeah. If you're going to do the stormwater conversion, you know, I don't know if it's Lieber or not, you know, if you're going to do both of them, then we're going to have about two miles of canal too, below the tail race.
It's a very complicated issue. Walterville in some ways more complicated than Lieber. Should we end up that we're talking about Walterville in that scenario as well?
Great. You all got what you needed.
Yeah, I think so. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the question.
Very much.
Welcome to Lieber 101. Well, I'm talking to three on one, another class.
All right. It says break five minutes on my agenda.
Where is it?
Yeah.
Could I make a suggestion? And we could free up Jason if we just went ahead because he's got 15 minutes. The website said that they do that and see if people want to do a break.
I think that'd be good for Jason.
You know, I said, pull him up once.
I think we should just wait till the end and sit here all night and then.
Change the tone. It'd be just like the session, actually.
I'm used to sitting through a lot of hearings, so. All right, well, good evening, commissioners. For the record, I'm Jason Hughes, your Government Affairs Manager. It's good to see you all. It's fun to be here. I didn't mind making the drive at all. It's been way too long since I've been here at EWEB, so happy to be here tonight. The 2001 legislative session was historic in many ways, notably the first virtual session. Certainly not an ideal way to legislate, but I think some parts of it worked better than people expected. Actually, the amount of participation for folks in rural Oregon, for example, was probably much higher and folks that, you know, working parents that don't have childcare, people sometimes testified from work on bills. There certainly were some positive things, and I'm sure the legislature will consider trying to retain some of that in the next legislative session because that, there were some silver linings about a virtual session. And I'll confess, testifying at an 8:00 AM hearing on a rainy day, I definitely enjoy doing that virtually rather than looking for a parking spot and hiking through the rain. I'd say the central highlight legislatively we should talk about tonight is the 100% clean energy standard that was approved by the legislature. EWEB was heavily involved in the work group that met really weekly, sometimes twice a week at the peak of the session to iron out the details in that legislation. That was by invitation only. It was not appointed by the legislature. We were there with the large investor-owned utilities. I'd say that EWEB has acquired a reputation as being very constructive. When we do raise concerns about things, we often give constructive alternatives or input. So we're, ultimately gets invited to the table for these work groups. And we certainly made a difference in trying to fulfill some of our key objectives as to what we hope to see in the legislative. as to what we hope to see in the legislation. The bill only applies to investor-owned utilities. That was not something that EWEB sought. I think we would have been content with a policy that worked well for the entire electric sector. But that decision was made. And just because we were exempted didn't mean that we walked away from the table. I think General Manager Frank Lawson has occasionally talked about, these policies affect everyone in the sector, even if you have an exemption. For example, if electric reliability is jeopardized, your exemption doesn't mean you're in the dark if the grid goes down. It doesn't mean you're not in the dark if the grid goes down. So we stayed at the table to raise some pressing concerns about reliability and how this policy would affect the investor-owned utilities because we're all in this together when it comes to keeping the grid up. The bill is technology neutral. That's a positive, one of our objectives. It's also a source-based bill where we measure carbon upstream in the bill rather than trying to track generation all the way to actual points of consumption. The bill ended up surprisingly being an emission-based bill. What that means is, unlike the renewable portfolio standard, RECs are not a currency of compliance. This is strictly based on emissions. And I think in the process of developing the bill, we realized that's a positive because it probably makes it less likely that the region will overbuild renewables. And that's a good thing for the consumer. The bill has important off-ramps for reliability purposes. Any utility that has a compliance obligation, if they need to go make unspecified market purchases for reliability purposes, they can do so without penalty. There's a process for them to go to the Oregon Public Utility Commission to have that approved after the fact. There's also a 6% cost cap, an important consumer protection. One of the areas of concern that we were disappointed in was the bill does have a ban on the siting of new gas power plants in Oregon. That was disappointing to us because we don't have a resource adequacy standard in the Pacific Northwest. We don't have uniform standardized methods or mechanisms for the region to determine whether or not we are resource adequate. That's a work in progress. Our General Manager Frank Lawson's at the forefront of that. He was on a symposium panel today on that very topic. So for us, we felt it was very premature to have a ban of that type, especially when you consider that Oregon already has a ban on nuclear energy. We just didn't understand why you wouldn't wait for a resource adequacy standard to be put in place for the region. The bill does allow people to go to the market, but without a resource adequacy standard in the region, we can't be confident that the market can provide the needed capacity for reliability purposes. Until we have that standardization and coordination to ensure that people aren't double counting what's available in the market, it's just, the time wasn't right. So we were disappointed that that happened. And we were definitely an outspoken proponent of waiting for a regional adequacy standard before a decision like that was made. Moving along, there was a wildfire recovery bill, House Bill 5006. That bill really was only made possible because Congress passed the American Rescue Plan with the help of Congressman DeFazio. Oregon would have never had the resources, in my view, to do what they did. They invested hundreds of millions of dollars into wildfire recovery into badly damaged areas around Oregon from the September fires last year. I'm happy to tell you that through our work, watershed recovery on the McKenzie was not lost in the shuffle. Carl and I testified, by my count, nine times about wildfire impacts on the McKenzie and the need for state resources to augment what EWEB and our ratepayers are already doing as far as investments in watershed recovery. I know Joe Moll from the McKenzie River Trust and Jared Wabright from the Council also testified several times. We were able to tell a great story. Our track record at EWEB and with the Pure Water Partnership left a really big impression on this joint wildfire committee and the appropriators of Ways and Means. We showed them we have an existing pipeline and a track record, and any funds that they put towards McKenzie watershed recovery, we're ready to go. We can get it done. There's nothing that needs, no wheel that needs to be reinvented. And as a result, in House Bill 5006, the legislature appropriated a $4 million grant to EWEB for repairing and floodplain acquisition and restoration. That'll be a pass-through through the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board. EWEB staff have been in contact with EWEB a couple of times now, try to find about, try to find out what kind of flexibility and what timeframe we have to obligate those funds. We're pretty confident we have the entire biennium, which just started at the end of June. But if we had even a little bit more time than that, if we could show that we have at least contractually obligated funds, that we might spread out the actual spending of that money, if you will, to projects over a longer timeframe, that could help us be a little bit more strategic in how those funds are used. There was also a $15 million allocation for McKenzie River water and wastewater infrastructure. That includes rebuilding the water system at Blue River and also potentially a new community wastewater system at Blue River. But also, that would, those funds would also go towards dispersed septic replacement and repair too. That's going to be overseen by Business Oregon. This is something, this is an area where Business Oregon doesn't have a lot of experience in. So it's very possible that, at the end of the day, Business Oregon may make Lane County a sub-grantee, and we'll work with them since they have the local expertise. Moving along, there was also a $315,000 ARPA allocation that was sponsored by Representative Paul Holby for Finrock Restoration Phase 1. Each legislature was given a small pot of money they could allocate in their district. So we're very grateful to Representative Holby for selecting Finrock as a recipient of ARPA funds. In general, although we did have this great track record and the legislature had confidence we could spend this money wisely, it was still not an easy task. I could give basically an Oscar speech to try to thank everyone. The Lane County delegation, Senator Prozamski, Representatives Holby and Nathanson, who both were on the Ways and Means Committee, Lane County Commissioner Heather Buck, who testified repeatedly about McKenzie watershed recovery, and my counterpart Alex Tyler at the county, Carl rearranged vacations when I needed a heavy hitter, a subject matter expert to testify in Salem. And Janine Perici did a fantastic job of coming up with write-ups of the projects. There was a lot of paperwork involved, and Janine hit a home run whenever we needed a write-up of how we could use this money. So kudos to her. And last but not least, Representative Brian Clem, the Chair of the Special Wildfire Committee. He's a Salem legislator and an Oregon State Beaver, but, you know, he's also a sixth-generation Oregonian, and he loves the McKenzie River, and he was fantastic. He went out of his way to help us as we tried to help that watershed recovery. So kudos to Representative Clem. Moving on, there was a wildfire mitigation bill passed, Senate Bill 762. It's going to be pretty straightforward for what EWEB would be required to do. All consumer-owned electric utilities in Oregon must complete and approve a wildfire mitigation plan by the summer of 2022. The EWEB Board will approve that plan. We'll only be sending a copy to the Oregon Public Utility Commission just so that they can sort of be, sort of have a statewide inventory of all those plans. That legislation also codifies the Oregon Public Utility Commission workshops on best practices for wildfire mitigation in the electric sector. A variety of EWEB staff are participating in those workshops voluntarily, but we want to stay apprised of best practices and hear what our colleagues in the industry are doing to mitigate wildfire risk. Lastly, I'll just quickly note, House Bill 3103 was passed. It clarifies the legality of changing character of use in water rights for federal stored water. This may not seem like a big deal now, but this is very, very big for EWEB's water future and I would say probably 50 or 60 other communities in the Willamette Basin. Surface water rights are fully allocated in the Willamette Basin. And so for any future needs, whether it be EWEB second source or other communities that have new water needs due to growth, this is the last water that's out there. And so this has been a 20, 25-year process to get to a position where municipalities can start accessing federal stored water if they need to. So it was great to finally finish that final chapter and put that one to rest, clarifying that WORD does have the ability to change the character of use for water rights for that federal stored water. So that's all I got. I'm happy to take any questions.
Or down there, Matt, you have questions?
Sure. Yeah, actually, I'll just start with one comment. Well, thanks, Jason, for this presentation and for the work you do in Salem. I happen to know that you take your job very seriously. We're hard on our behalf, and it's really nice. I also want to reiterate what you were saying about the wildfire, the wildfire funds, recovery funds from the legislature. We, so for those who don't know, I work in Lane County doing wildfire recovery. It's my day job. And I have seen firsthand that other communities that didn't have the type of watershed protection entities in place the way we did here, did not have it, is, is good, not as successful in funding resources. And it's more difficult for them to do watershed recovery work than it is for us because we have the Pure Water Program in place, and it's a huge asset. So I just think we all should be really proud and supportive of that. And then I just have one question about 2021. And the last one, either have theirs as established as a $50 million state investment fund for renewable energy products. Is that something that is for me for investor-owned utilities? Or can we access those funds as well, or do we know?
Yeah, it's actually probably, it's actually the reverse. I don't believe private companies will be eligible. It would be primarily for local governments, and then I think nonprofits may be eligible as well. So as a, as a local government, EWEB would certainly be entitled to apply for funds. And I'm sure we could come up with some interesting ideas, potentially renewable hydrogen for resiliency. That's certainly something we could look into. So Adam Schultz is the staff person at the Oregon Department of Energy who will be in charge of setting this up. And we talked to Adam quite a bit, and we stay in tune as to that program getting off the ground. And I think we should certainly take a look at it.
Great. Thanks. Go ahead.
Thank you. Lots of track. I don't know how many, is it 4,000 bills or something that's here? You had to follow along on, glad you're doing it for us instead of us having to do it ourselves. The only question I had was in regards to the ARPA fund and on Finrock. I know that ARPA funds have specific uses that they can be used for. And I'm just wanting to make sure that that, you know, the little Christmas presents that each legislature got with ARPA funds, the $2 million that they got to spend, that that project will fit into the ARPA qualified funding box.
Yeah, we feel pretty good about that. I don't, I don't know that Representative Holby was given anything in writing or a letter, but the ARPA bill does have a very specified authorization list. I don't know that if you're excluded if you're not on this list, but if you're on the list, you're kind of golden. And water infrastructure is one of the authorized uses. And as far as we know, the US Treasury and Office of Management and Budget in Washington, the instructions they've passed along to the state, we haven't seen any reason to believe that green infrastructure is excluded from that definition of water infrastructure. So we feel pretty confident that there'd be no hangup on that. And I know Representative Holby, like I said, I don't, I don't know that he got anything in writing, but I do know that that was vetted with the legislative fiscal office in Salem. Great, thank you.
Quick comment. Thank you very much for your efforts. When we have an out-of-area legislator go to bat for us, like I definitely, what's in the clam, what method of acknowledgement do we, I mean, as a board, should we send them a thank you letter? Because we don't get to interact with those people on a regular basis like we do our local legislators. If that person went to bat for us and really was an advocate for us in McKenzie, would it be wise to send them a thank you letter as a board?
I think it'd be great. I think it'd be outstanding.
Could somebody maybe do that? We could sign him to the board to acknowledge him because we don't interact with him. It would be nice to say, thank you, anytime you want to give him some money, go ahead.
That would be great. I think that anytime we're on the McKenzie River in the future, we should definitely think of Representative Clem and invite him along.
Thank you for your job. Appreciate that.
Mr. Brown, I'll ask Jason Huser to draft up a letter.
I have two questions. I don't know if one is for you, Jason, or one is for Frank, but we don't often find ourselves in a position of like, maybe having a little too much money sometimes. So with the McKenzie watershed funds, you were saying that like, it's a lot of money. Hopefully, we can expand over a little bit longer. I'm just wondering, like, does this give us an opportunity to think a little bigger on some things than we were planning because we have this funding?
President Schlossberg, I'll answer, and then I'll see if Jason has anything to add. Do you know Carl Morgenstern?
Thank you.
He thinks awfully big on these subjects. And I don't think there's too much money actually here. There's, there's a lot of work to do in the watershed. I think we identified through some of the strategic work, $20 million over the next five years. So it's not too much money. And, but does it facilitate different kinds of thinking? Absolutely. And I think that's the way we want to operate. And part of that is just the, the way we prioritize our whole source-to-tap approach to water, including the watershed. Jason mentioned the relationships that we've built up in the watershed pre-disaster, which were really beneficial in our recovery now. So I think it's a great point. It's one that we'll have some discussions with management, Carl, and Susan Perkey and some of the others in that group and say, does this open up more possibilities? And we'll have to negotiate a little bit with Deborah Hart, who was always looking at the other side of the equation, financial perspective. But it absolutely opens up possibilities, and I think that's a great point.
I don't have anything to add. I know Carl is thinking how to be very strategic now, and there are opportunities to scale up, but I think Carl wouldn't really be the person that answers that. But I think there's, we have some good options.
Great. And just for the record, I don't want Carl to leave you minutes and think that I'm questioning that we have too much money. No, no, no. I would say it's really exciting to have all this, to have extra money that we weren't planning on and what the opportunities were for this. So that is what I meant by that question. My other one is just that, what is in line on the runway for the next legislative session, do you think?
Boy, that's a tough time, tough time to ask that. Everyone's trying to forget the session. I've been camping off-grid. But, you know, I'm certainly interested to see whether anything with a multi-sector approach to carbon reduction happens. Governor Brown, as you may all recall, after the failure of the Clean Jobs Cap and Trade Bill, she did make, issued an executive order that put in effect carbon caps and reductions for sectors like natural gas, industry, transportation. But, you know, that, that's all going to be subject to litigation. And, you know, it would be interesting if the legislature decides. We're not sure we want to take chances in court with what the governor perceives as her authority under some of the existing statutes. We want to give explicit statutory direction to enact carbon caps and reduction paths for, across multiple sectors of the economy. Obviously, Washington State was successful in doing that in this past legislative session, leaving Oregon as the only Pacific Coast state without economy-wide carbon caps. So that will probably come back, you know, with the quorum issues. It's unclear what can be achieved in that area. But certainly, you know, this time around, the electric sector was addressed. And I would say, we've probably been the sector delivering most of the greenhouse gas reductions for a pretty long time. There certainly is some, some room left to deal with those other parts of the economy.
Thank you for all your hard work and for just with all these meetings where we don't get to you or we come back to you at the end. So, thank you. Anybody have anything else? All right.
Thank you, and thank you for all the support.
Thanks, Jason.
All right. So now we are at break. We're still running a tiny bit ahead, but I think 10-minute break. Yeah, okay. So we'll take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back. Um, good to everybody? Yeah, okay. So we'll take a 10-minute break and then we'll come back after eight.
And we're on Agenda Item Number 10, the Electrification Impact Assessment's Preliminary Residential Results.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Megan Tapper, Energy Resources Manager, and I'm going to kick us off this evening and then hand it over to Ben O'Rick, who is our Long Term Planner, to talk about our preliminary findings and will end with time for you to ask questions and provide any feedback. So the objective tonight is to share the preliminary base case findings of Phase 2 of our electrification impact study. And then in November, we will be back with our final Phase 2 results. This analysis looks at all possible outcomes if there was future electrification of small passenger vehicles, building space, and water heating. Last November, we completed our Phase 1, which took a broad brush approach at understanding the drivers and magnitudes of impact from electrification of EWEB's future loads. This year, we narrowed our focus on how economics influences electrification adoption rates, and you can see that defined in our Goal Number 5. Why is it important for us to take time to better understand the potential features around electrification? Well, first of all, it's in support of the Board's climate change policy that says EWEB will assist with their carbon reductions through several measures, including smart electrification. This study helps us define what is smart electrification. It allows us to better understand and quantify where we see transfers and costs of benefits between any EWEB participating customer, our ratepayers, and society at large. So it's basically who pays, who benefits, and where we as a utility should prioritize and support shifting of benefits to help all grids. Secondly, this work allows us to better understand the drivers around how our customers use electricity. It serves as a key input to the 2020 Want2 Integrated Resource Plan. The Integrated Resource Plan puts together both customer demand, which is our electrification study, and generation options to help us plan for the future. And here, I'm going to talk, just give you a quick reminder of what we learned last year in our Phase 1. First of all, we found that our peak load could increase by 50% to 70%, and that's for all of the entities together. We also saw that about 75% there'd be about a 75% reduction in annual greenhouse gas emissions from an internal combustion engine to a new EV. Finally, we learned that without policy drivers or mandates, we were uncertain if we would see the high or even medium electrification adoption rates. So we wanted to further explore the other drivers of adoption, which is economics, and focus on the cost-benefit analysis. So I'll hand it over to Ben, who will give you some more of the details about our findings.
Great, thanks, Megan. So tonight, we're sharing our early findings, which again represent our base case assumptions. And we plan to do some sensitivities around these assumptions and bring those findings back to the Board in November. But Frank encourages us to get to the bottom line up front, and so on this slide, I just want to try and cover that. For electric vehicles, we're anticipating higher levels of adoption starting after 2030. And as electric vehicles are expected to become much more cost-competitive with gasoline cars. By 2040, as much as 85% of the vehicles on the road could be electric, which is much higher than our highest scenario we presented in Phase 1. This could lead to a peak increase for EWEB in our 1 in 10 peaks of 30%. For residential water heaters, we're anticipating moderate levels of electrification by 2040. Heat pumps are expected heat pump water heaters are expected to become more cost-competitive with natural gas. Although water heating technology is not a large energy use, we do anticipate that this could increase our peak load by 4%. Residential space heating is a more complex electrification opportunity. Under our base case assumptions, we would anticipate low levels of adoption. The reason we have a question mark here is because our findings are sensitive to assumptions. We plan to explore that further and bring back those learnings by November. So diving into methodology. We wanted to understand consumer choices and estimate when and how much electrification we might see in the future. Ultimately, consumers will electrify if they see benefits. Some will choose to electrify for non-financial reasons, like their passion for the environment. Those factors are difficult to model reliably. Instead, we focused on financial analysis to quantify the benefits and costs of electrifying. And we calculated the simple payback period to estimate the levels of adoption. Simple payback period is the upfront cost of electrifying divided by the annual benefits. And it gives you a sense of how long it takes to recover your costs. The shorter the payback period, the more people you would expect to electrify. We also looked at costs and benefits from three different perspectives: the EWEB rate pair or the EWEB participant, EWEB ratepayers, and society. The participant perspective quantifies the benefits and costs for the individual EWEB customer. And ultimately, it's this individual who will choose whether or not they electrify and become a participant in electrification. The rate pair perspective quantifies the benefits and costs for the EWEB rate pair, even if that rate pair isn't the individual who chooses to electrify. Finally, we looked at it from the societal perspective, which quantifies the benefits for the individual, the benefits and costs for the individual, as well as the community benefit of carbon reduction. Exploring costs and benefits from multiple perspectives gives us insights into the extent that all perspectives benefit or there's a lack of alignment among these different perspectives. A lack of alignment is when, for example, the participant bears all the costs, but rate pairs and society receive all the benefits. For electric vehicles, our base case assumptions assumed reasonable increases in electricity and gas rates over time. We also assumed that the Pacific Northwest grid continued to decarbonize and that by 2050, we would have very low emissions on the grid. In our EV benefits, we included federal tax incentives as well as the Oregon Clean Vehicle Rebate in the early years. But by 2030, we assume that those incentives will phase out. We also assumed an average light-duty vehicle useful life, 12 years. For electric vehicles, our early finding is that EVs benefit from all perspectives and that these benefits are anticipated to grow over time. Looking at the benefit-cost ratio at the bottom of the slide, you can see that all ratios are above 1, indicating a net benefit and that by 2030, on the bright side of the table, these benefits grow. In 2021, federal tax credits and the Oregon Clean Vehicle Rebate are key drivers to participant benefits, implying that if you don't receive those incentives, you actually might have a net cost. By 2030, though, after these incentives go away, EV adoption is expected to have obvious financial benefits to participants. The simple payback period is expected to decline from six years in 2021 down to only two years in 2030. This would lead to much higher levels of adoption starting in 2030. This adoption chart helps illustrate that point. The total light-duty vehicles on the road is represented in gray, and the green area shows the increase in the number of EVs on the road over time. You can see that 85% by 2040 is pretty dramatic, and it's higher than our Phase 1 study showed in the high scenario, which is illustrated with the black line. I want to clarify, though, that there's still uncertainty regarding the future decreases in EVs. That's not guaranteed and could influence this adoption curve. To better understand the potential energy impacts of this transition, we worked with our consultants at E3 to analyze charging behavior in 2030. The estimated future impacts for peak energy use per vehicle may actually be less than we anticipated in Phase 1. This is because we anticipate higher levels of workplace and public charging in the future. This better reflects the reality that some people will not have access to home charging or those that still utilize some public and workplace charging during the day. Assuming unmanaged charging behavior, this could increase our peak by 30% in 2040. Managed charging behavior would decrease these impacts, and we plan to explore that more when we come back in November. This transition is expected to be slow at first, and we have time to explore peak mitigation opportunities before adoption really ramps up in 2030. We believe this deeper understanding of EV adoption will be helpful as we project energy demand into the future, and we plan to use this data in our upcoming IRP. Moving on to space and water heating. Our assumptions were the same as electric vehicles, but we also added in some things that are specific to natural gas. We assumed that renewable natural gas or renewable gas blending goals would be met, which is 15% RNG by 2030 and 30% by 2050. We also assumed a useful life of 10 years for water heaters and 16 years for space heating technology. The economics of water heating is expected to be favorable in the future. Today, heat pump water heaters have an 11-year simple payback period, which is actually longer than the useful life of the equipment. However, the cost competitiveness of this technology is expected to improve over time. The benefit-cost ratios below are shown without EWEB incentives. And while today, it doesn't represent a participant benefit, you can see that technology improvement by 2030, that it's neutral for the participant and continues to improve after that point. Today, EWEB has an $800 energy efficiency incentive for buying a heat pump water heater. This is actively influencing the adoption of this technology by reducing the simple payback period from 11 years down to only four years. Even without these incentives, we would expect moderate levels of adoption of heat pump water heaters in the future. This could lead to a 4% increase in our 1 in 10 peak loads by 2040. For space heating, an early finding of our Phase 2 study is that the economics are core for space heating electrification. Simply put, heat pumps are not cost-competitive with natural gas appliances today, and that trend is not expected to improve over time in our base case assumptions. Looking at the table of benefit-cost ratios at the bottom of the slide, it should be noted that the EWEB rate pair consistently benefits from electrification of space heating, but the participant remains below 1, indicating a misalignment of benefits between the rate pairs and participants. Space heating is a complex electrification opportunity because space heating and cooling causes EWEB's peaks today. The benefits of further electrification are not as obvious, and our findings are more sensitive to our assumptions. Each of the heat pump technologies we've studied here offers different levels of carbon reduction and different peak impacts to EWEB. For example, dual-fuel heat pumps cost more than a standard heat pump, but they offer the ability to switch to natural gas during very cold temperatures, which would avoid adding to EWEB's winter peak loads. Between now and November, we really want to explore how sensitive these early findings are to our assumptions and bring back to the Board what we learned. Analyzing economics in our Phase 2 study has provided us with some useful insights into our opportunities for smart electrification. For EWEB, smart electrification means looking for opportunities to benefit participants, rate pairs, and society while also considering the peak impacts for the utility. Today, adopting an EV has benefits from all perspectives, and that's expected to improve over time. Going forward, EWEB will need to be mindful of the peak impacts and consider how this might impact our future ratepayers. If electric rates were to become less affordable, participant benefits may decrease over time, which would slow EV adoption. Heat pump water heaters represent a net cost to the participant today, but they're being actively influenced by EWEB's energy efficiency incentive. This incentive is a real-life example of the exchange of value between rate pairs and participants, and it offers a break-even point where both perspectives can be net beneficiaries. Continuing this incentive in the short run may encourage further electrification of water heating technology until it matures and eventually becomes more cost-competitive with natural gas. Space heating is a more complex electrification opportunity, and cost remains a barrier for the participant and society perspectives. Rate pair benefits could be shared for dual-fuel and standard-efficiency heat pumps because there's a break-even point at which both the rate pair and the participant can both be net beneficiaries. Cold-climate heat pumps don't currently offer that opportunity, and they don't have the same break-even under our base case assumptions. Between now and November, we want to explore how sensitive these early smart electrification findings are to our assumptions. And with a deeper understanding of these sensitivities, we can clarify where the smart electrification opportunities exist for our customers. Thinking of those sensitivities, we'd love to explore gasoline and electric price sensitivities for electric vehicle. We plan to quantify the impacts of managed and unmanaged charging behavior and explore the financial impacts. For space and water heating, we plan to explore a scenario where the natural gas system reduces its carbon content with high levels of renewable natural gas or some other low-carbon synthetic gas, like green hydrogen. Higher levels of renewable natural gas likely increase natural gas prices, potentially making electrification more beneficial to the participant. However, there's uncertainty around EWEB's electricity supply costs as well. We plan to explore these electricity supply cost sensitivities and better understand the potential impacts for our rate pairs and bring that to the Board in November. With that, I'll make it up for discussion.
Okay. Do you want to go first, Espere?
I don't have any questions. I just have a compliment. I've got to understand it now. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. You've got to take things way down a level for me. But I really appreciate the way this has been presented and the way it's going. And I think we're heading absolutely in the right direction. And I want to thank you for your time and efforts to do what I think is a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll take that back to the team.
Yeah, just a couple things. Yeah, thank you. The presentation was good. The slides were good. Couple of, I guess, one of the questions that I would have is where does did you figure in air conditioning into this with the heat pump thing? Because, and I'll just give you an example, right? We don't have a heat pump at our house. But with it getting hotter and hotter in the summer, when it's time to replace my furnace, which is a gas furnace at this point, I would consider a heat pump because of the benefits of the air conditioning that I don't have now. I've just got room air conditioners to do that. So was the other side of that coin the benefit of air conditioning put into these analyses?
Yes. So in our base case assumptions, we assume that when you replaced your gas furnace, that your air conditioning unit was only 50% depreciated. So we figure that they don't happen to just go out at the same time. And so we assume that you kind of lose out on that 50%. And then one of the sensitivities that we can explore is to say, okay, well, if you electrify right at that perfect moment where both your air conditioner and your furnace are going out, there's actually a better benefit to you as a participant switching over to heat pumps at that moment. But our base case assumption assumed a 50% depreciation.
And I'm thinking for people who don't have any air conditioner, right? So that would, when we've got a month of 90-degree heat, I may look to get rid of my gas furnace quicker, even if it may not be at end-of-life because I'm on an air conditioner, right? Or a heat pump that will help cool my space. So that's just one of the things that I think might be put into some of the scenarios that people might replace it because our summers are getting hotter. The other thing that I think would be important, and it was brought up in public testimony, is that we need to share this with our community partners that are developing policies and possible incentives because they've got climate action plans that are based on electrification and goals that they're trying to meet based on electrification. And since we've got this great tool for them to look at and say, yeah, it looks like we can hit it in transportation, but we've got a fair ways to go in the space heating and water heating sector. And your assumptions are that we're going to make it in those areas. So getting all of our lines to mix, to come together between what we see and our analysis and what their analysis are, I think it's going to be a very important thing moving forward. So, thanks.
I'll also say thank you for the presentation and the analysis. It's super helpful, super enlightening, well put together. Thank you. I have questions, and I'll probably just give a few and then toss back a few also. E3 is helping with this analysis, is that right?
Yeah.
And I didn't see that reflected in the report. It might be useful to add just so that other people who are reading just recognize that we have that kind of third-party support. At the beginning of the presentation, you reminded us of a lesson from the Phase 1 study, which I appreciated, that peak load could be increased 50% to 70% if we see high levels of electrification. But that assumes no energy efficiency improvements, is that right? I think that's a really important caveat because there's a ton of opportunities, I understand it, but there's a lot of opportunities for energy efficiency improvements. And so the increase in peak load isn't likely to be that because we have tools to help counter that, right? It just, so to be super blunt, our partners at the City of Eugene, there are some folks who will say, hey, EWEB can't absorb its high rates of electrification because exactly that improves the peak load. And I think it's important for us to be clear with them as we roll out these final reports that we do have tools to temper that peak load. And efficiency is a huge one. Perhaps demonstrating the scale of that efficiency opportunity and/or the cost or the savings there would be useful. The multiple perspective analysis that you've done, or do you view the EWEB, the individual, the rate pairs, and the society as super helpful? Thank you for setting it up that way. I haven't seen an analysis that does it that way. And it's, from my perspective, it's super helpful, especially in thinking about how, as you pointed out towards the end there, we can transfer some of that benefit from the rate pairs to the individual to make this all work. It was surprising to me that electrifying home heating is a really high benefit. It would like, I mean, 3, the area of 3, right? Compared to the individual or the one that's not a huge benefit or actually was a cost. I assume towards, in the final report, we kind of get a sense of what that might look like, like what kind of incentives could we take out of that pool of rate pairs to provide to the individual to make that all work? It's, Chris Jones made a comment earlier, and I don't know if you were able to hear, you know, pointed out that it's pretty hard to see the barriers to adoption in heating because that's so significant. But that there is such an opportunity there as demonstrated by the way that you've done this analysis is useful, some room for hope there. I'm gonna, should I keep? I'll stop and give you all a chance to go in.
Thank you for your presentation. I have a couple comments and maybe an anecdote. But it seems really clear from the way that you've laid it out. So EVs and home heating slash cooling, right? That's where you get the most bang for your buck carbon-wise, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we know that. So I'm curious if we have had any talk with, like, the city about, I know this is their domain, but like if they were to require new homes to be built with electric heating, say, heating and cooling or something, is that something that we have brought up with the city or they've talked to us about in order to like increase electrification in that area? Because it's much harder to get existing people, right, to adopt this new technology, what you're finding, versus if there's a requirement that a certain contingent of new homes, or I don't know how the city would work, but that would be like EVs inroads. And I'm curious how that works or if that's even a place.
Right. It's a good comment. Right now, we are really focused on the analysis and just kind of laying out what our preliminary findings are.
My other thing is just, I am curious about the cooling piece because I know that maybe this is an off-year, although I doubt it, but that we tend to focus on heating during the winter and that we don't really need like air conditioning here. But it does seem like if we're forecasting many years out, that that may change. And so what will that, what will that look like? And that just brings me to my anecdote. I too, unlike John, where I don't have air conditioning, I have a gas furnace, I have a high-efficiency gas furnace. I would love to switch to a heat pump. And when I joined the EWEB board, I panicked because I didn't have heat pump in my house and I have natural gas. So I had, EWEB come out and do, like, look at our house. I use the program where somebody comes out and does an analysis of your house or whatever. And it was going to cost $30,000 just to switch from our, just to switch our heating. So that is, that's huge. And I'm one of these people that would like do, I would pay for the benefits of society and all that, but not $30,000. And we were told that it wouldn't be as, we wouldn't get as much heat. It would be a lot. Anyway, it wouldn't be as good. So I do think that we need to figure out some other kind, like some major incentives if you're going to get people existing homes to switch and also to find ways eventually once we're into the, like, what can we do with this information for new home construction? So, yes.
So great questions, Commissioners. There's a few points I would just like to make relative to the context of this. We, this is really feeding into a number of other issues. It's one thing to say, oh, here's some data and here's what the interpretation of the data is. The next step is to, how do you use that data and what does it mean in the broader context? For example, the air conditioning question. The region is having trouble in the summer. I'll just add that. And so while we historically, on the sort of the northwest corner, have been peaking in the winter, that is starting to shift. We will actually see how we make it through this summer from a regional perspective. It used to be very simple. In the winter months, we imported electricity and we were in surplus. In the summer, we had extra. We shipped it to California because they were hot. And that's now shifting. So it's one thing to say, here it is from EWEB's perspective. It's another to broaden that out a little bit and look at the region, which I think is an important part of the equation. To me, this answered a couple things pretty quickly. One is EVs are a great idea. They benefit everybody. With or without EWEB incentives, they benefit everybody. The hot water heating was interesting The, the hot water heating was interesting because there was a true shift in value in that equation. It makes, it makes sense for us when you have benefit to society and you have benefit to a utility that, and, and not benefit to necessarily the participant, that you, if you can influence that, which it showed that we could, keep our incentive, keep our eight hundred dollar incentive, which I think pushes that along. The space heating one and the air conditioning piece of that is a little more complex. There are a number of assumptions and all of those assumptions are dynamic, including the role of conservation and load shifting, peak shaving, however you want to look at that. What is the value of that has to do with the replacement resources or the carbon intensity of those resources at the time? That's why they put a question mark on that one. Not that we can't make some guesses, but there's a lot of dynamics as to the assumptions that we're making. So far, we have assumed that conservation, for example, offsets sort of traditional organic growth, not necessarily pile and patient growth. And so if we're going to change that assumption, we have to understand where those opportunities are and how those investments are made. That's another area of investment. But it did reinforce kind of some of the stuff we're doing, but we also recognize there's, there's some work here and this is definitely good information that will feed into the IRP. We'll definitely share the results and work with, with other people on this. We also don't want to shift around the other way and have there be a beneficiary to the individual that now society pays for, and the beneficiary is the individual. We did include the socialized cost of carbon in the benefit from society. So there's, there's a value placed on carbon for society. You can, you can argue all of these assumptions, but it, it does show some things very clearly and other things are probably just kind of what we think. They're, they're a little bit tricky. So I think the group's done a really great job of trying to boil this down to, here's the, here's the key people involved and what does this mean economically? It doesn't have to do with your individual values around these things. This is just, when you place a value on this, what does it, how does it shake out in this? So some more work, including looking at the sensitivities of costs between natural gas or obviously the gas sector and the electricity sector. Both of those will increase in price over the next twenty, thirty years. They will both change their carbon intensity over that. So there's some, there's some work here around what those assumptions look like. So it's not an easy answer. It's a little tricky, but we've got a lot of ways to kind of slice it and dice it.
Now, I know you had more to say, so we'll do another, we'll do another go around, but we'll start with Matt and our work.
Okay, sure. Thanks. I know it's out of scope to talk about the medium duty trucks and industrial interviews like the kind of those. And I'm curious, maybe you could touch on this. If we can just get a sense of scale, are those big or are those small in terms of both the impact on EWEB's budget provision and also on greenhouse gas emissions? That would be, you don't have to answer that, but it would be useful to know, you know, perhaps with the final results, just sense of scale, what does that look like? RMI has done, have you seen the cost benefit analysis that they've done for a number of cities, including Seattle, specifically of electrification of natural gas? And so they compare natural gas furnaces and AC to heat ones. And the team that has done that, they have a building electrification team and they are available to help. It would be worth passing our results to them and asking them to take a look and, and provide feedback. And I'm happy to share contact info if that's useful. And then the last question I have, you use CO2 for natural gas emissions, right? Just the emissions associated with combustion. You didn't look at life cycle emissions. I'm curious why and/or if there's an opportunity to include life cycle emissions because there's so many emissions associated with, as you know, methane releasing, production of natural gas that we are, that's not reflected here for just, you know, the question of CO2.
Making a note, include upstream emissions in the, in the CO2.
I can add a little bit of that. So the challenge with looking at total life cycle within, you have to look at total life, life cycle of all technologies, which would include solar, it would include hydro, it would include all those, and those get, those get harder. We generally recognize the systems in the West are tighter, so losses in the system and the way that it's, it's measured at the well site, those are, those are changing, they're evolving as well. So it, it just, we, we didn't exclude it out of ignorance to it. There's assumptions that can be made at the wellhead, for example. But we just thought if you do that for one particular choice, you need to do it plus the order. That'd be pretty tricky.
Yeah, I agree that you'd have to do it for all the different technologies. It'd be interesting if we could, if we could even kind of figure this out ballpark because our, our understanding of natural gas emissions needs to grow, right? And then we, we learned about increasing amounts by leakage and our assumptions have been inaccurate by, by understanding the methane release.
The challenge that I think we're going to have with some of this is at some point, and I, I agree, there's, there's probably some ballparking of sort of logic that we would apply to this. At some point, I need to get this team up onto the IRP, just, just, just so you know. And, and electrification is a piece of that and it's, and it's important contributing factor to this. And I'm not, so I, I think this is more along the lines of a, of a climate analyst or something where we can take a look at this in a little bit of a context. There's, there are a lot of movement, a lot of moving pieces to this.
Agreed. And a final point on that, I appreciate the building capacity internally to do this kind of modeling and analysis. It's going to be important going forward. Super grateful you all are doing this work.
Thanks. I guess the question that I'd have would be, in the modeling, how do, I'm concerned about the social equity because of, when you're talking about eating, eating and cooling spaces, for a homeowner or a business owner or whoever's going to do it, if they own the property, the incentives are different than if, if somebody is a renter, right? If you're a renter, you have no say on how you get your key and tools. It's all up to the landlord. And so have you figured out a way to incentivize a landlord? I mean, you're, you say, okay, well, we can give eight hundred dollars to a, to a person to put a water heater in. But are we going to put, give a multi-unit apartment complex eight hundred dollars for two hundred units, you know? And are we going to give some, you know, these societal benefits aren't going to go to the renters? And in the city of Eugene, fifty percent of our households are renters. And so there's, we've got to figure out that incentive, or has that been put into the modeling that fifty percent of these people have no control over whether or not they're going to get those impacts? And that goes with efficiencies and electrification. So I mean, how does that play into your modeling?
Yeah. I think this is a great, a great time to talk about modeling versus programs because I think what we did in our study is we modeled and we're looking at averages. We're trying to do broad brushes because we don't know Mindy's situation. She's got a specific house with specific HVAC conditions that made electrification not make sense for her. So when we think about EWEB programs, we have an energy efficiency team will come out to your house and help you with your windows and, and, and that kind of, that's an example of a program versus our modeling is much more based on averages and assumptions. And so I, I think that's why we spend a lot of time trying to publish what our assumptions are, so a reader can go through and go, is this true for me? You know, is this cost that we, that you said for an HVAC system, is that my house? And you say, oh, that's, that's way low for me. You're way high. So I think that's what we're trying to do in our modeling is really be clear about our assumptions, try and speak to averages and broad brush about our community. And then we can take this information and use that to help inform our programs and, and look at that equity component. And I, I guess I'll give a shout out to Juan in our electric vehicle program. He is always talking about there's an equity component to it. So anyway, I, I really think there's some programmatic things that we can do to help address those things.
My last comment is actually to you, John. We've brought up these issues with the city multiple times during our quarterly meetings and one thing that we've talked about with them is that we need to partner with them to make these changes, especially for renters because, like you said, they have absolutely no say whatsoever. So as long as I'm on that, uh, bill committee that meets with the city quarterly, I'll continue to push for that. And one idea was just that when you advertise rent for a unit, that it has to include your utilities as well because that's an incentive for landlords to switch to something that is more efficient and costs less for renters.
On that topic, just from historical perspective, SMT, second municipal utility district, when I did a, the, the PDA conference, they have a very good program on modernization of the non-occupied inventory down there. You may want to reach out to them to see what they did because if you're talking about modernization, you can also talk about electrification, how they did their rental pool. And it was, they did programs on it. It seemed very, very successful and I don't know if anybody's ever followed up on that because we were talking about weather rising, the rental pools, that maybe SMT has something, you've got a pretty progressive utility down there. Maybe there's something you learned from them, steal some of their secrets.
Yeah, I'll, I'll comment a little bit. We do have some non-occupant, whatever.
Owner, occupant.
That, that's it. Programs. This is really, or Julie is probably still sitting in the back there to evaluate relative to our programs as opposed to the assumptions we make around modeling. But I think the point, it, it, it's a challenge for Eugene and inherently, utility bills are regressive in who they impact the most. And so when you transfer value from one segment to another, you have to be really careful you're not creating inequities in, in that process, just because the pure cost of what we do is, is applied sort of in a regressive fashion. But I think that's a very good programmatic question. This kind of topic is also why we tried to tee up with the city of Eugene, a, a joint meeting in, it's like potentially late September with council and the, and the board. And I think that would be a phenomenal topic to talk with the city about.
Well, thank you for all of your modeling. See that we're ready to jump ahead and program. But thank you very much for that information and I look forward to you guys coming back in November, right?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're getting to the home stretch here. Addendum item number eleven. We are on the quarterly strategic and operational.
So commissioners, good evening. Frank Lawson for the record. This is very abbreviated at this point. We, we anticipated a very late mall meeting this evening and so I broadened, I condensed down this part of the, the meeting to just a few minutes to hit a few highlights. We actually have added to the agenda in September, really kind of a full project for you. Unfortunately, a lot to catch you up, Mr. Borowski. But just, just a few things, we typically would go through for anything of quarterly significance that we, we think the board needs to know about and where we are with our, our annual goals. If there's a few things I would like to mention, they're probably up here on the screen, number three, four, and five. We have discovered some sinkhole trail bridge reservoir. Our camp safety staff is working with stakeholders in the area as well as with the FERC on assessing, investigating, mitigating that. We are presently able to keep the reservoir at its sort of minimum levels to still allow carbon to operate. Number four, some supply chain issues. This is, in some cases, caused some, some delays in receiving certain equipment. This has really evolved over the last couple of months primarily, and then we've also seen some inflation. I think that was in the report in certain areas that, that were called out, but that's, some of that is, it's a temporary, some of it is, is long-term. And one of the areas that that is impacting is the smart meter deployment. Presently, we have sixty thousand meters deployed electrically and another thirty thousand roughly on the water side. This only affects the electric side in the particular residential meter. We'll be slowing the process down until probably mid-October. We don't think that's going to, at this point, affect our Q1 2022 deployment goal, but it is something that has impacted our most recent rate of deployment at this point. We wanted to make sure that the board was, was aware of that. Some of the other things that are, are notable, like I said, the, the goals for next year, for the most part, we are still on target. The gas metering, a little bit behind schedule, that was because of some of the deployment issues there, but we still think we'll achieve our goal at this point, barring further delays from the meter supplier. But a lot more detail coming this next month. You did get the seventy-five page report with lots of charts and graphs and information in there. Financially, we, we seem like we're in strong shape so far this year, mostly driven by high consumption, retail consumption, with some good management on the cost side. Our expenses are under budget, so in pretty good shape financially, but a lot more to come. We intentionally kind of scheduled this to be just that quick. Here's a couple of key points for the board and then we'll be more of a full report out next month since there was plenty of room on the agenda for that. Just, just any questions or comments?
Yeah, since I may not be here next month, we'll see. If I can, if I can remote in from Italy, I might do it, but it'll be, it'll be at seven in the morning. So first off, I want to give kudos for the Wendell Safety Award that the Water Department had. I think that's, anytime that there's awards given out for safety, I'm, I'm all for that. And I was digging in a little bit and I just had a question on the synotoxins. I know we, we, we look for those and, and measure those. And I started thinking about second, second source water. And I'm wondering if we're ever going to start doing monitoring where we might be doing, pulling second source from, because to be honest with you, I was out on Dexter Lake last week and Dexter Lake is, it looks like pesto. So, you know, and it happens every year. And, and while I wouldn't toss my pasta with it, let's put it that way. So I'm just wondering if, you know, I mean, I know that the Willamette is more, is more prone to algae blooms than McKenzie is. And I'm just wondering, at what point do we want to start looking into monitoring where we're going to start getting our second source from to, to figure out how many months we're not going to be able to or what type of extra treatment we're going to have to do if we start pulling water out of the land?
Yeah, there's a couple of comments on that, Commissioner, and then I'll, I'll actually ask Karen to weigh in as well. So originally, we did quite a bit of testing on water quality on Willamette just as a baseline that it, it is prone to different kinds of contaminants, different water temperatures, algae blooms. That's more an issue of treatment process as it is to, since, since we have the opportunity to design the plant for the particular environment it's going to operate in, that's more of a plant design and spilling issue than it would be that we would design a plant only to operate certain hours or certain days of the year. That, that is one of the challenges that one of our neighboring utilities has on that particular source is there's times of the year that it's a challenge to treat with, with an older process. So I think that's a spilling issue for the, for the new one. As to when we might start doing more active monitoring, I'm not sure. Do you know?
I know we've talked a lot about it now that we have our certification for synotoxins and our timing. There are upstream samples of other utilities that use Willamette that we have access to their data on, so we can watch, you know, from other locations what's happening. But yeah, certainly we'll be getting examined at some point once our plans do a lot of reform. And as Frank mentioned, our, our preliminary plan would be have ozone as a treatment and possibly carbon filtration to handle as a synotoxin. And we'll also deal with some of the other constituents we're concerned about that are emerging, such as the non-stable fresh air products, the PFAS, EFOA compounds. So definitely assuming that we'll need to treat for all the emerging challenges.
Okay.
And we have her own lab now, which is amazing. You can tell she seems to be a regulator.
And, and I guess the, the only question that, again, I dug it, you know, I clicked on one of the links and, and got to the, the reports and it looked like we're testing every two weeks. Is that something that is, I mean, we've gotten no positive tests, at least on McKenzie water. Is two weeks in the summer enough? Or is it, or should we go to one week when it gets as hot as it is? I guess. She's not even had like two weeks is enough, so.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll speak to that. So, so the requirement is every two weeks during, I think it's from May through December, and that's the state requirement. And we also sample up, upstream on other timelines and for other purposes to see what's happening. So we do have on data then, perhaps what we're reporting just for regulatory compliance purposes. When a detection happens, it triggers additional. So then you're sampling every couple of days depending on what the levels are. So it's just, it's that triggering effect and has you looking both at raw water and finished water.
Right. Thank you. And then this is all just my learning process. So, thank you.
Couple of questions, comments. Page twenty-four, emergency fairness. Five of the sub metrics we, we didn't meet. Is that getting, going to get turned around or are we going to continue there on emergency fairness?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's obviously one of the important things that we worked on, without knowing which, which one you refer to off the top of my head, but.
All the drills and, and emergency well drills, exercise, emergency ties, all of those didn't get done. And, and it just says out of the metrics, just wondering, I, I think that's pretty important. I know it's made COVID related, but I just wondered if we can get back on schedule.
Yeah, we, we will get back on schedule with those. There's, there's one of those metrics that I recall was fairly challenging, maybe exercising in the valves, that there's some resourcing behind that one, but some of the others are, that was part of the maintenance issue of, of all that. Our intent will be to cover it on those.
Okay. And the other comment on page forty, we talked about escalation. I know a lot of the financial plans, we still use three percent constructive cost escalation. And I've kind of been banking through them saying it's a whole lot more than that. We call it thirty percent. I look at these, you know, nine percent for tree trimming, twenty-seven, sixty percent for iron, ten fifteen, you know, all of these things are way above what we're using in. And I know, you know, are we going to continue to do our forecasting on 3% when reality is telling us it's a lot more?
Well, it's telling us a lot on some specific cases, yes. And we'll continue to look at the modeling and make adjustments if we have to. We're also looking at the fact that this is a model that stretches over a decade. So we have to look at what the sort of the turbulence is in that process. But I know that, and also, what are the impacts with a different assumption? If we assume 4% versus 3%, what does that do? Does that mean we scale back certain projects or the risk-based projects? Or do we continue with a certain level of funding? This really drives our rate funding more than anything else. And we get the right things done with the right amount of funding. And it comes back to some of those assumptions. But I'm sure that Deborah Hart is probably listening.
Oh, yeah, she heard that.
Heard that, yeah. I think that's an ongoing process. And like I said, we'll continue to see if these look more like trends or more like sort of excursions. But some of them like tree trimming. Because of the last year, that one actually makes some sense that it's due to an incident or an event-driven activity. So that's just one example.
I was, last, I'll just say that, you know, look at the second source. When we started that discussion, it was 70 million, now it's 90. And nothing's changed in the design or the location or anything else. It's just construction costs, and that's huge, 20 million bucks.
Right, what's the cost of money for that?
Well, the cost of money has actually stayed pretty low, hasn't it?
Borrowing has, but just even if you apply a 2% or 2.5% over the time when that was developed to the time, that's a 10-year window, if I remember right. It's in our original scope, and we're talking 2025 construction. That's a 10-year at 2%. That's almost 20%.
So you just got the situation. That's all, thank you.
Matt, do you have anything? Really quick, I know that there's some things that we're not on target with, but there's many things that we are. And kudos for keeping us on track during a year and a half into this pandemic. A lot of good stuff that's still been going on. So thank you for the leadership.
Well, thanks to staff, more than anything. But we'll talk about some more things in detail this next month. I wasn't sure how much time we would have for this agenda item. And so really just made it more of a quick, here's a couple of things to note. And we'll come back with some more discussion this month.
Great. Well, then we are moving on to correspondence and board agendas.
There was only, there's only one piece of correspondence having to do with E-Web's compensation plan and the charter update that was from Deborah and her group. I don't know if there's any questions on that. If there are, this is Deborah's group. Not Jane or Harry, any. Also on the agenda report, we've added a couple of things. We're starting to add in some field trips and some tours this fall in various, and we wanted to take you up and show you the canal. We want to revisit in probably October, the Pin Rock Reach and show you the progress there. Hayden Bridge, we'll probably go on a tour of that for those who have missed it. So a number of different tours, potential meeting with the city. It sounds like some potential work sessions to spread some of the topics out a little bit. So there's, there's a lot on, you know, I'll just make a commentary. There is a lot on this board's plate. I don't know, you know, you've been around this subcommittee ground a lot longer than I have. It seems like the next couple of years, two to four years, there are some really impactful decisions that this board needs to make and help guide us on. But I don't know that I felt like there's this much for quite a while, looking at some of the past boards. So for me, Lee Bird's a big one. IRP work is incredibly important. The pricing work that we're going to do is incredibly important. We'll talk about COSA. He's talking about one small little piece of it. There's a lot more to it that needs to be looked at holistically and probably over a period of time. So there's a lot of work to do. Appreciate your guidance and support.
Any questions, Frank? No? Okay, board wrap up. Start with you, Matt, if any.
I have one when you're done.
Okay, we'll go down this way if any question you want to add.
Yeah, I don't have anything else, thanks. Yeah, I would, I just wanted to thank staff. So this last month was real challenging, especially for Ward 2 and 3 with the storage facility. And I just wanted to thank staff for all their support that they gave to me. And hopefully we learn from this and can take the lessons that we've learned as far as outreach and those types of things and move forward. It's been very challenging, both as an organization, I believe, and as a new commissioner, to have to weather this controversy. I think we did a good job of it. But again, I wanted to put out there to it that the staff has been very supportive to me and this, and I really appreciate it.
I'd like to acknowledge the security. You know, I noticed that there's one. But, you know, it's, we've had people that we don't interact with until we're really needed, but then it's too late. And I'd like to thank you guys for giving us a sense of security this evening because we had no idea. I mean, this is the second one I've been through. The program thing was pretty contentious. But just thank you guys and all your associates and coworkers. Thank you for being here and having that presence and doing it in a professional manner and not being intimidating. Thank you very much. It really gave a sense of, okay, we're good. And I really appreciate your presence, so thank you.
I would just like to give a thank you and appreciation to the staff that's been working on the East Fortieth Water Project. I know that their job has probably been really difficult last month or so. And I'm sure it's hard to go to work some days. And I just really appreciate all the hard work that they've been doing. And I'm just really grateful that they're doing this good work. That's a great meeting.
So my last thing is I did want to acknowledge that Karen Kelly has been a member of our executive team. She's our new chief operating officer. So she's taking her water expertise and now is going to be asked to expand that across some other things. And I also wanted, in that setup, I wanted her to give the board just a quick last, very up-to-date status of the East Fortieth project as it stands, almost sort of minute by minute.
Good evening. President Schlossberg and commissioners and General Manager Lawson. I'm Karen Kelly. For the record, I am still the Water Operations Manager until Monday, then the Chief Operations Officer.
That hit my stomach.
But from the bottom of my heart personally and from the project team, it means the world to us that we've had your support from the get-go. And in my 26 years of doing this kind of work, I am very impressed with the knowledge that you have had in order to answer the questions, the thoughtfulness you've had to try and, you know, meet your constituents where they are, yet keep the technical side where it needs to be. So I really, really appreciate your support. And we couldn't do this project without you. We did meet yesterday on the site at 7:00 AM. Tree felling began around 7:45. It went very fast. We have all but 12 of our trees on the site that were slated to be cut are down. Around 3:30, well, let me go back up. So around 1:30, the work was done. 11:30, the trees were down. From 11:30 to 1:30, there was some cutting of limbs and stacking of logs that was taking place. And so by 1:30, the work on the site had been done. Around 3:30, we became, we were notified of the actual stay on order from the Board of Windu's Fields. So we did meet with the city of Eugene and with our legal counsel and decided it would be best to call off work for today to make sure we understood all of the pieces to this stay order. So that's what happened today. There was some movement on the site to move some equipment. There was no actual work on any of the actual downed trees. And then we did meet with council again and with the city and have decided that we're moving forward tomorrow, beginning at 8:00, with clearing of the site. We will not touch any of the remaining 12 trees that were slated to be cut. But we do believe that the stay allows for us to continue some of that cleanup work. So if you have any calls or questions about that, that's what's going to be happening tomorrow. As far as the actual stay goes, it has not been rescinded. If it does not get rescinded, then they will do, you have to submit legally. Both parties have to submit their merits for the case on the stay by Monday, close of business. Then Luba has up to Friday, as I understand it, to respond to those merits. And then that case could potentially be decided at that point. Anything could happen in between. And we'll keep you apprised as to what we learn. So I'd be happy to answer questions. There are any.
I have a question. Do we think the city of Eugene's going to wait until Monday to provide the information that they require? Is there any, there's a reason you need to wait until Monday?
I don't believe there's any reason to wait, but the Luba, I don't believe would act on it until after Monday. It's what it looks like.
Oh, I see.
And the other party has to get their piece in by close of business Monday.
Thanks.
Could you send out the appeal to us so that we can look at it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we know who their counsel is and who's the buyer?
We do.
And can you answer that question publicly?
Can I answer that question publicly?
Yeah, you can answer that, it's either counsel.
Okay, Zach Medke. Zach Medke, I can look up his firm.
And who's funding it? Is that public record of who's? Because this is an inexpensive proposition.
I would have to defer to Frank as to whether I can say who. But I can't, I believe I can say that they did post a $5,000 deposit. So that's the money at stake from their end at this point.
I believe we can state who filed the appeal. I'll have to actually look up and make sure that I can give the board the exact wording for that. I don't want to misstate who actually filed for the appeal. So if all the commissioners are interested in it.
No, I think I already know. I just wanted to be the one who knows.
Yeah, I don't know who's funding it per se, but I can look up the specific wording if I can.
Thank you. And they appealed the erosion control permit?
Yes, for construction that was issued by the city on Friday.
Okay. And so an erosion control permit is, is that a planning director's decision? Or is?
I believe it is in the planning department.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'll look at it when I see it. Yeah, that's what I know. No, I know, I just didn't know building permits and those different.
I think our purpose for this discussion was mostly wanted to thank you for your ongoing support and also to give you some information as to what's going to happen at the site tomorrow and the next few days. And to welcome Karen, pre-materally too.
You've still got a few days to back out.
Exactly.
Great.
John.
So if that's it, we're going to end 30 minutes early. And good night, everybody.